Um, we believe it meets the criteria as long as these uh, as long as conditions are met. Most particularly, uh, the site development needs to um, follow our requirements in order to reduce impacts on neighboring properties. Parking is obviously a concern anytime you have an assembly function and we want to make sure that it's not going to provide undue uh, impact on adjoining properties that uh, with regard to parking. We are recommending approval of the requested conditional use for worship assembly, subject to review and approval of a site plan and building elevations in compliance with the chapter one thirty-five uh, ordinance regulations. Also, we want to make sure any conversion of the building is in conformance with building and fire codes as um, there are specific requirements uh, that will come along with being an as- assembly use under the building codes. So, that's the recommendation at this point. Um. We got a communication from uh, property owner of fourteen seventeen twenty-first indicating a number of concerns. Does anyone need me to zoom in on that?
Yes, please.
Is that better?
Now, you're, you're sixty-six percent. You're at two-thirds there. Can we just bump that up?
Yeah, I can scroll through it.
There we go.
Be on the screen if uh, I'll have to scroll through them for you.
So, the property um, directly adjacent there on Twenty-first Street, that's a residence, correct?
Yes, and I'll, I'll, I can show you the consent map here.
Okay.
And the, one of the properties was a former residence on the north side here. I'll go back to these um.
And Eric, I can probably address this with um, if somebody's here with any concerns. But as I read this, are these concerns about past uses and not the proposed use? Am I correct on that?
Um, I think there's still some of the, so there's usage, there's other usages of the building that are beyond worship assembly. So, I think there will be some functions of, of the building that will be like more of a business use in nature.
Okay, so, so some things that have occurred in the past will continue. And then we're just gonna have a, this will be a, you know, public civic institutional use as well, uh, center of worship, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And so, I, I would imagine some of the activity being described could be continuing, yes.
Okay, all right.
We'll uh, scroll their uh, letter from Iowa CCI that's a nearby occupant.
All right.
And then I'm gonna zoom back out just a little so you can get both of these cards here.
Mm-hmm.
One of them is the subject property owner. Another one is the art for the Iowa CCI. And then this is the uh, card also from the person that wrote the letter.
Mm-hmm.
And then here's the consent map, so you can see the green.
Mm-hmm. All right. Okay, all right. Well, board members, uh, do you have any questions for Eric? Well, Eric, I'm just gonna throw in here a quick, just a quick question that I would have um. The reason this is in front of us is not because they're asking for any variations on requirements for parking, open space, square footage of building, et cetera, et cetera. In the zoning ordinance itself, it's just designed that public civic and institutional assembly uses are to come in fit in to that surrounding district. Is that generally correct?
Yes, correct. So, the other elements of the site development or building would, would uh, be considered if things were appealed from that perspective for another process.
Right, so, so nobody's asking for any exceptions or variances or, or changes to other requirements for the site?
Right, not at the moment, yeah.
Okay, all right. Okay, so board members, going once, going twice. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, all right. We'll go ahead and move on then. Uh, the applicant, whoever would like to represent the appellant here, you've got up to ten minutes to present your reasoning for your request for your conditional use permit. And we need you to start by first giving both your name and then address, uh, if that's the address of that uh, location, fine, um, but whatever address is relevant for you. And whoever would like to speak on that. Um, staff, do we knew, know who wants to speak? I don't have my menu up here right now.
Yeah, uh, Abdi had let me know he was going to be um, joining the meeting. I'm not seeing him on the list, but perhaps he's one of the three phone numbers?
All right, so if you're here to speak um, on this item as the applicant, if you're participating by phone, hit star and nine on your keypad on your phone. That's how we will see that your hand is up. I say we have one person with a hand up. Would that be him?
I'm gonna guess so.
Okay, so we'll have staff um, go ahead and approve you. So now hit star six on your phone and that will unmute yourself. Okay, can you hear us?
Yes, hello.
Great, and we can hear you too. So again, we just need your name, address, and you've got up to ten minutes to present your reasoning for your permit request.
Yeah, um, my name is Abdi Abdinor. The address is fourteen eleven twenty-first Street, fourteen oh seven eleven uh, twenty-first Street, and fourteen fifteen twenty-first Street, and Taubah Islamic Center I'm representing. The reason why we are requesting for the conditional use is um, our community is a big population. We have a big Muslim population here in Des Moines. And we didn't hide a, a center to help our community and both spiritually and academically. And a lot of our students are robbing schools, some of them are joining gangs. And so, we thought about if we have a center that we can help those who are in need and, and also help the students and the youth development. And that's what our main objective was, and a spiritual place where we can worship God. So that's the reason why we, we requested for the conditional use. As a simple amen.
Sure, okay. Well, you've presented that, I think, uh, concisely and clearly enough. Um, would you be okay with taking some questions from the board members?
Yes, I am.
Okay, all right. Board members, do we have any question for the applicant?
Mr. Chair, this is Cindy. Um, I'd like, I, I'd like to ask what, what, you know, uh, the, the activities, the timing of them. There was the note from the gentleman um, who's in opposition to this, who said there was children running around and at eleven o'clock, and I, I didn't quite read the whole thing. I just saw bits and pieces of it, but um, I was just wondering, you know, what, what is the timing of the activities? Is it on weekends? Is it every day? Is it twenty-four-seven? Just to get a sense of that.
Yeah, thank you very much Cindy. Um, our neighbor, I think even me, I read about, you know, what it was saying, like at the end, it's, it's, it's like the presence of a large number of strangers. So, I, I don't know. I, I don't wanna pose any threat to anybody. And the building, as Eric said before, uh, the side of the, and forest side is a, a place whereby it's meant for like business. So during this Ramadan, we are, we are doing Ramadan, which is a month of fasting. So, some people, because of they were fasting during the day, so they come over there. So, and then that, that, that is based of the business side, kids and parents sometimes come. But it's not like something that's regular. Usually, some of the nights they come, but it is only on weekends. But uh, other than that, to my understanding, um, we had another hearing before. It was our, the same neighbor that had the same concern. I don't know if he had another issue with us based on his argument here. It's like saying strangers consistently entering the, the premises. And that, that brings like a fear to him. To my understanding, we are not, we are here in diversity. We have to accommodate everybody. However, they look, the religion that they have, we should coexist and we should be, feel like, we don't, should not judge ourselves based on how we look like. We should not stigmatize. So, unless you wanna like, say exactly like there's a reason as to why for us, this, we are not a threat to anybody. In fact, we welcome everybody to our center. By the time we, we are, we are given the conditional use. On the other side, we started like kind of a business. And that's mostly is only our community right now, since it's not like well-developed right now. So I don't know if I answer your question.
All right, is that helpful Cindy?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, all right. Any other questions for Abdi?
Yes, uh, Mr. Chair, this is Justin Gross.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Hassan, um, the staff has recommended approval today of your request. Um, but I'm trying to figure out sort of what, what um, based on the staff recommendation, why you're not um, agreeing with the, what the staff is recommending?
But no, we, we are not disagreeing what the staff is recommending. We are totally one hundred percent agreeing with, with.
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're hearing the case today, Justin, because we, we had some comments presented in a fair amount of detail um, with concerns about the proposal. Um, and we may have someone at the hearing present as well in opposition.
Got it.
So, yeah, yeah, yep, no, that's, that's, that's cool. Some, sometimes there's some nuances here by, by Zoom that aren't as clear as if we were in person. Um, uh, yeah, so Mr. Hassan, related to that, um, are you?
Hello, sorry.
Okay, let's, let's hold on here just a second.
Hello, hello.
Who is speaking right now?
Yes, this is the um, I'm sorry, I couldn't able to get out of the mood. So I would like to add, and you know, I'm from Taubah Islamic Center. Hello, do you hear me?
Yes, I, I, I can hear you, sir, but if you're going to give testimony during this initial phase, I'll need to have you give your complete name and address.
Yes, yes. My name is Abdi Salam Hassan. And so, in uh, Taubah Islamic Center, fourteen oh one, fourteen oh seven, fourteen fifteen twenty first Street. So, I just would like to answer the only question, why do you need you guys um, to have this building used? So, as Abdi says, um, we are um, community, so as you know, we had before another building, which is twenty-sixth and, and which was um, twenty-sixth seventy-nine Maury Street. And that building is really far from the community. So, when we are trying to do the activity for our, you know, teenage, everybody say, hey, that, that is far away. We're not able to go there. And then because of that, we lost many cases. As you know, one of our, you know, um, our teenage died last year in the river. So we are trying to handle the, all the teenagers in, you know, in the, somewhere in the middle of the community. And that is why then we purchased this building. Even we couldn't afford or we couldn't able to buy by cash. As you know, we, we bought this by contracting. So, because of that, we are really need your help first of all. And then we are trying to cover whatever you guys uh, recommendation and whatever is required means, yes. But because of that, we need you to let us to use this. That is why I would like to say. So I am the Imam, uh, the leader of the religion and the member of the community. So that is, uh, sorry if I, you know, uh, talk late, and thank you very much.
Sure, sure. That's, that's, that's okay. We, we appreciate your concern uh, and your, and your uh, passion uh, for what you're trying to do here. Um, so just one closing question I had here. Um, whether the concerns are warranted or not, uh, from the neighbor to your north, they've obviously been presented. We may hear more about them. But um, do you currently have any kind of fencing or screening between your property um, on the north in there on Twenty-first Street to that neighboring property? Or in your site plan that you've proposed, are you going to put in any additional uh, landscaping or green space boundary or any fencing?
Yep, um, I, I kind of missed it. So what did you say about the north side?
Yeah, well, it appears we have concerns about your, your neighbor, which I believe is just to the north of you on Twenty-first Street. Do you have any kind of physical barrier between you and the neighbor? Any landscaping, any fencing? Or would you be proposing or be putting in anything like that to provide a little bit of a, a buffer area between you and the neighbor?
Yeah, by the way, there's a big fence between us. And, and the space, and after our, in, in our site plan, after the conditional use, and that was our second thing that we wanted and to baby. And then if he requests that we bought like a, another fence which is wood, we will buy it. We'll more than happy to do it. But nowadays, a fence, it's a wire, wire fence that is uh, it's there, yeah, in between.
Okay, yeah, and I see, I, I, I see that chain link or wire fence as you described it in the staff photos they just flipped through, and I see here on the site plan, you're gonna have some additional trees there, it looks like. Um, is the, is the left side of the page, the north side, staff?
Hello, do you hear me?
Yes, sir.
I'm still, okay, and the, we are really use this building for a, and, and limited time. So, week, weekend, we are not using twenty-four-seven. So, the time we're using is only weekend, like you know, on ten to one o'clock, and then we four to eight. So during the night time, usually we are not using, but I think is, this is the uh, Ramadan. Ramadan is really special. It's the only thirty days. So we can, we can eliminate everything is that you guys needed. And there is no, there is no noisy come out of the building. But if you guys, uh, it is requirement to build the fence, we can do it. Because whatever we doing, we do inside the building. We are not doing outside of the building. And, and then the usage, it, it, it is limited. It is limited.
Gotcha, gotcha, yeah, yeah. I, I think we have a pretty good i- idea of, of how your property would function. Again, I'm just looking at some of the physical angles. I think staff is showing on your site plan, it looks like that there would be a wood fence. Um, but I can't quite tell. Is it gonna be on the north side of the property? Staff, can you just go ahead and answer that for me?
Go, Abdi.
Yeah, there, well, and they would still be subject to approval of their site plan, but the, but the concept that was submitted with the application shows a wooden fence uh, as part of the uh, parking lot buffer to, to the north. And that's a, that's a requirement in our site plan regulations.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to kind of affirm or focus on that, that there will be a physical barrier screening between uh, this location and the neighbor to the north. Okay.
Yeah, and a number of evergreens and plant material as well.
Yes, as well, as well, okay. All right, so, so gentlemen, um, I'm gonna see if any of the other six board members have any other questions for you. So, board members, do we have any other questions for the applicants?
This is Lynn Carlson. I have a question. So, in the letter, it specifically mentioned people slamming doors and talking loud at eleven o'clock at night. It sounds like most year events end at eight o'clock, so these events that are ending late at night are not related to your building. It's just kind of a coincidence? Is that what you're saying?
No, it is related to our, it's related to our building. But based on what the Imam just said, it's because of this month Ramadan, we are fasting. So usually before, when they are fasting, they stay home. So then after the Ramadan, we break the fasting at around eight-ten. So, that's the change that came, but it's only this month, and it's gonna end by May of ten.
Yeah, so it's not a regular thing?
No, no.
Yeah.
Well, and, and, um, and we'll, we'll hear if there are some negative comments, but um, a parking lot has closing doors. A parking lot has vehicle engines, and a parking lot can have people talking late at night. Um, I don't believe the city has regulations in their zoning ordinance that says car doors cannot be closed, vehicles can't be started, or people can't talk in a parking lot. So I think it's important to put this in perspective. Um, if an owner has some, some due care on not allowing any kind of loitering or activities not consistent with simply coming and going from parking lot. Um, I don't know what the undue concern would be. Um, but we will proceed with the hearing and find out. Any other questions from the board members for these gentlemen? Okay, all right, so seeing none. So gentlemen, just hang on for a second here. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and go through this next part of your item. So, um, is there anyone else who wishes to speak in support of the applicant's request who has not already spoken? If so, hit the raise hand icon in the Zoom app on your computer, or hit star nine on your phone to be recognized. Anyone else in support besides the two gentlemen who have already spoken? All right, seeing none. Is there anybody who wish to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? Hit the raise hand icon in Zoom if you're participating by computer or on a, on a app. Or hit star nine on your phone if you'd like to be recognized, if you want to speak in opposition. I don't see any there. Um, anybody that wishes to speak in neutral on this item who has not already spoken? Seeing none. All right, Sue Ann, do you have any comments from zoning enforcement?
Chair members of the board, I have no comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And board members, any questions for city staff? Okay, all right, I don't see anything. So, so gentlemen, um, what we'll do is we'll go ahead and go to board deliberation here, which means the board's gonna discuss this ourselves and everyone can listen in, but we've taken all of our testimony. All right, so board members, uh, any initial thoughts or direction on this? Anyone wanna jump in?
Even with a motion. Chair, this is Justin Gross. I'd like to move staff recommendation.
This is Nathan, I'll second.
All right, so we've got a motion by uh, Justin, a second by Nathan, uh, with staff recommendation, which includes the staff rationale. Um, so all those that would be in favor of granting the requested conditional use permit, uh, we will have Tyler take roll call on that.
All right, Nathan Blake?
Hi.
Lynn Carlson?
Hi.
Dave Gare?
Hi.
Justin Gross?
Hi.
Marla Jones?
Hi.
Cindy Smith?
Hi.
Dana Melpens?
Hi.
Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, all right. I wanna thank you both for coming in. Um, by this time next week, our city staff will provide you with written documentation of the approval of your general uh, conditional use permit. Uh, I will encourage you work closely with the city staff on how you implement your site plan. You'll have to comply with all the requirements in the site plan and related things related to signage and landscaping, et cetera. And I know our staff will be here to help you if you have any questions on that. So I thank you for coming in today, and I wish you well. Okay, that'll bring us to item number two, which is uh, some zoning exception requests at thirty-six twenty-one Merle Hay Road.
Right, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Bert Dross, planning staff. The request would allow for installation of two thirty-six point five square foot signs. One of those would be on the uh, west facade of the building, and the other would be on the south side facade of the building. And they need, the first exception would allow them to exceed the maximum forty-eight point seven five square feet of signage allowed for the, in total on the building, and then the second appeal would allow them to put twelve point one-five square feet over the maximum twenty-four point three-eight square feet of signage on a non-frontage wall. So the site is, uh, it was a former Hardee's restaurant on the east side of Merle Hay Road, just to the south of Douglas Avenue. Uh, again, one sign would be on the west facade facing uh, Merle Hay Road, and the other would be on the south side facade facing the parking lot. Here's the south elevation. Uh, you can see it's thirty-six square feet. It's uh, staff believes it's sort of appropriate scale for the building. And this is the west facade facing Merle Hay Road. Again, we also believe that the size is appropriate for the building. And then there are some more drawings that uh, they had provided. You can see it's a former Hardee's. And this is the layout showing that the, the highlights are the one sign would be on the west and the other on the south. And some site photos, you can see it's currently under renovations. Um, staff has recommended approval. We felt that the signs are appropriate. It's only a zoning exception. So they were needing to demonstrate a practical difficulty rather than a hardship. Uh, so we have recommended approval, uh, but the reason we weren't comfortable having it uh, approved on the consent agenda is that we had received this letter from the property owner immediately to the east. Um, you read the letter, their concern really is that um, there's no fence or there's gaps in the fence along the east side of the property line, which allows for people to pass um, through the site. And I'll show you on the map. Um, you can see that there's a parking lot immediately to the east. And there are no, there's some gaps in the fence right here. Since this parking lot adjoins another parking lot, it's not required to provide a screening. So there's no required fencing from the city's standpoint. If the applicant wanted to provide a fence, um, we would, we sure wouldn't stop them either. But um, again, the reason that we were having this discussed today is because of um, this letter here on the screen. Not to show you the consent map, you can see that um, the author of the letter owns two parcels immediately to the east of the site. So, that's all I had. I'll leave this letter up here uh, now, so you can read it if you'd like. Um, did anybody have any questions for me?
Anyone have any questions for Bert from the board? Uh, Bert, I'm gonna throw just a couple out here for some clarity here. Um, on the signage itself, um, will they be installing a monument sign as part of their redevelopment?
Uh, that's a good question, I.
And I never do this just to see if you're on your game.
Yeah. It looks like on the sketch here, they are showing E one uh which would be. And I know the sign contractor's on this call.
She's probably. Yeah, yeah, I I I see it there at the top, it says something monument sign on the top of their little table.
Yeah, you're right, yeah, there is the thirty-six square foot monument sign.
Okay, now, re- related to the signage on the building itself, you had noted that it is in, you know, um, proportion and scope based on the size of the building. But yet they're in front of us because they're asking for an exception because it would basically be just under fifty percent more than what's normally allowable in the ordinance, is that correct?
That is correct, so their signage earnings are based on this width right here.
Okay.
And since the, it has thirty-nine square feet of frontage, it earns one point two five square feet per foot of frontage, which
Got it.
Them to about forty-eight square feet of signage.
Okay, cuz cuz otherwise, I was gonna say you got quite a draconian ordinance because the sign as proposed doesn't seem all that large.
Yeah, if the building was oriented with the longer dimension fronting the street, we definitely wouldn't be.
Convenient after that, like.
Right, I've got you, okay. All right, um.
Why did you do that?
All right, we we've got some folks need to put their microphone on mute, please. Um, we've got some background noise here. Um, also Bert, um, related to the fence, um, there are no requirements uh by this board that if somebody wants to look at signage exemptions that that we tie into whether they do or don't have a fence to prevent somebody from off-site from cutting through a property. There's, there's no real connection between the sign ordinance and the fence ordinance, is there?
Right, no, there is not.
All right. And I'm assuming these aren't going to be Chase Bank customers cutting onto the apartments, it's probably people from the apartments cutting onto that property to go over to Merle Hay Mall.
Yeah. Well, from the letter, it it sounds like people are cutting across from Merle Hay Road, across the Chase Bank, and then even across the apartment complex.
To get to a residential neighborhood or some final destination, then?
Yeah, I don't know if there's a, a motel a little bit to the east.
Okay, all right, I got you. Okay. All right, okay, uh, so just finally, board members, anybody else have a question for Bert? Okay, seeing none, um applicant or representative of the applicant. And I do, I wanna be as nice as possible, but I'm assuming we're gonna have one person present on the applicant's behalf on each case here. If we have others that wanna speak in support, I would rather have them do that as separate testimony. So do we have an applicant that wishes to speak on this item? If so, hit the raise hand icon or star nine on your phone to be recognized. And Bert, do we have an idea of who that might be? Sign company?
Yeah, let me pull up the email.
So while Bert's looking that up, is there somebody here on item two representing JP Morgan Chase Bank as either business, property owner, or sign company that wishes to tell us about your sign exception uh request?
Yeah, I believe Lisa Scoville was going to be speaking on behalf of the sign contractor, but, okay.
All right, I see she's here, so Lisa, if you're participating by phone, uh, hit star six on your keypad. And I see we have another hand up from the Omaha area, so um, we're playing Russian roulette here, so who is gonna speak on this item? All right, let's, let's go ahead and and recognize the four oh two number, Bert, and we'll see who it is first.
Okay, yes, please give your name, uh, your first and last name and your address.
Uh, this is Lisa Scoville. Um, the address is thirty-six twenty-one Merle Hay Road.
All right, Lisa, so just give us a round robin about what you wanna do and why we should consider your exception request.
Um, basically, we just want to put um a little bit bigger signage than what the code is allowing. Um, just so that it's able to be seen from the street, um, because the side of the building that is facing the street is the smallest side of the building. So um, having a bigger signage up there proportionate to the size of the building um would help us greatly.
Sure. Okay.
As far as the fencing goes, I don't, I'm not sure why that really comes into play with the signage on the building, um. I mean, we can't talk to the property owner and find out if there's something that the two property owners can come up with um as a more permanent solution for the fencing.
Right. Yep, and Lisa, that's probably not in in your purview, I understand that, but yeah, appreciate you giving a comment on that. All right, anything else you wanna add?
I I don't think so.
Okay, all right, board members, any questions for Lisa? Okay, seeing none, thank you very much, Lisa. Um, so what we'll do now, is there anybody in the audience who wants to speak in support of the exception request for the signage? You wanna speak in support? Hit the raise hand icon if you're participating in Zoom, or hit star nine on your phone if you're participating by phone. And we'll look for those signs to recognize you. All right, seeing none. Anybody wants to speak in opposition to the request for the signage exception, anybody that wants to speak in opposition? You're participating by Zoom, hit the raise hand icon or hit star nine on your phone. You're participating by phone if you'd like to speak. Going once, going twice. Same thing for um anybody who's kinda neutral on the issue, if you're on the fence. Dun, bump, okay, uh, seeing none. All right, any um further question, or any comments from the zoning enforcement officer?
Chair members of the board, I have nothing to offer on this one, thank you.
Okay. I'm sure we'll hear from you later, okay, um, anybody else have any questions for staff from the board? All right, hearing none, we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation. Cindy, this is in your area, what do you think?
Right, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to move staff.
This is Nathan.
All right, motion by Cindy, second by Nathan to grant the requested signage ex- exceptions. Uh, all those in favor will say aye, opposed will be nay, we'll have Tyler take roll call.
Lynn Carlson. Dave Gare.
Hi.
Justin Gross.
Hi.
Marla Jones.
Hi.
Cindy Smith.
Hi.
Nathan Blake.
Hi.
And Mel Pins.
Hi.
That motion carries seven zero.
Okay, all right, well, Lisa, thank you for coming today and representing your client. And uh, we'll have that decision in order uh back to them by this time next week, and then you can complete your sign permit. Okay, I'll move us on to item number three, uh, conditional use approval request in the vicinity of fifty-nine twenty-one Fluor Drive.
Yeah, um, Mr. Chair members of the board, Bert Dross, planning staff for the city of Des Moines. The uh, subject property is located along the east side of Fluor Drive, just to the current exit of the Des Moines International Airport. So it's just to the south of um the exit or the interchange with Highview Drive and um Fluor Drive. The subject property is zoned MX three, which only allows for a parking lot uh that is used accessory to a permitted use of the property, so in this instance, the parking lot is the primary use of the property rather than an accessory use of the property. So that is what is driving the need for the conditional use approval. The subject property is currently used for a parking lot uh for long-term or short-term parking for airport customers. Um, there's an existing office building here at the southwest corner of the site. They are going to be removing this building and putting in a smaller building, which would allow them to add a few parking spaces, so it's really that expansion of the existing parking lot that is driving the need for the conditional use, and so since it would only be adding a handful of new parking spaces, um, staff felt it was minor enough, which is why we had placed it on the consent agenda, but we did get one comment card back in opposition. And I see um her name on the list of attendees today. So here's um a photo of the existing building, again, this is what would be removed. Here's another photo of the parking lot from Fluor Drive. This is the site plan that they currently have under review with the city um permit center. You can see the proposed building right here would be fairly small, it would be twenty feet wide by about twenty feet deep. So much smaller than the existing building that's there right now. And then this is their site plan. So you can see the existing building, uh they would be removing it. And then the uh newer building um would be in this general area as well. And then the balance would be converted to off-street parking spaces. So staff um believes that they have met the criteria necessary for granting the conditional use. Again, those are just that the um location is uh or adequately safeguards the health, safety, and general welfare of persons residing in the area. Uh, wouldn't impair uh the adequate supply of light to surrounding properties, et cetera, I won't read through all of these, but we do believe that this use meets the uh criteria. As a surface parking lot accessory to, or I guess that serves the nearby Des Moines Airport is a reasonable use of the property, so we have recommended approval subject to um two standard conditions, one that they comply with chapter one thirty-five of the city's code, uh which is generally the site plan ordinance, and then two that they uh comply with all of the applicable building and fire codes. So here's the consent map. Um, and two cards in support, and then here's the card from the neighbor who is in opposition, so. Did anybody have any questions for me?
No, uh, but this is Nathan, I'm just gonna uh announce for the the group, I need to duck off for a short period of time, uh, and so I don't, I'll be able to consider this.
Okay, yeah, yeah, uh, just because you got another conflict, you're not, or are you abstaining specifically on this one?
No, 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 uh.
Okay.
I I I park cars and fly, so I'm interested in it, uh, but yeah.
All right, so, yeah, so 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 you're abstaining on this one, okay, all right. Um, yeah, um, okay, so, yeah, questions for Bert? Uh, Bert, just two brief ones, first and foremost, um, your photos seem to show some fairly uh mature and well-maintained landscaping on the uh Fluor side. Um, and a little bit there on on the back and side street. Um, if they go through a complete site plan, uh, will they have to add potentially even more landscaping or um or or any setback changes?
They will have to meet the current landscape standards for the areas that are being uh disturbed, so you can see the green on here is where they'd be adding landscaping.
Okay.
So it looks like the new landscaping would be predominantly along the south and east side.
Sure. Which are primarily toward the residential areas uh nearby, okay? All right, and secondarily, you had mentioned, well, hey, it's a parking lot, it doesn't have a um um, um, use on the property, there's no other business there, it's just a parking lot. I'm assuming this is a third-party private business, and again, people park there and then take a shuttle to the airport.
Right.
But but there is, there are other parking lots south of here that are down by the Holiday Inn on the northeast corner of Army Post Road and Fluor Drive. And I'm assuming in those cases, those are part of the Des Moines Airport and are therefore considered related parking, so is that a different scenario?
Yeah, in in those city-owned parking lots to the south of the Holiday Inn are zoned P two, which would allow for standalone parking use.
Okay, could this have been rezoned as P two to allow for standalone parking use?
It could have, I suppose.
Okay, all right, but generally speaking, private property, lots of other private businesses that are uh in that MX three, so it's probably why it's MX three.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all right. Clear enough, okay, any other questions for staff? All right, seeing none, does the um, is the applicant present today, and would they like to give us uh their reasoning um to request this conditional use permit?
And Dave Albright be the applicant?
Okay, yeah, um, I'm gonna go ahead and recognize Dave, so Dave, we need to have your name and address, and you've got up to ten minutes to address the board with your reasoning for your uh permit request.
Good afternoon, board members and staff, David J. Albright at twenty-nine hundred Delaware Avenue in Des Moines, Iowa, five oh three one seven. Um, the reason that, I guess, for before the board this afternoon is that uh we had made application for a demolition permit of the existing structure that's located at the corner of Fluor Drive and Peyton Avenue. It consists of two thousand two hundred and forty square feet. Um, we've uh owned the structure since two thousand thirteen. Uh, we marketed it uh for lease. And in eight years, um, there's been absolutely no interest in in uh having a secondary-type business um located in that structure. Jet Parking itself, which is a long and short-term uh parking lot. We uh, we have a shuttle, we have secure parking for the customers of the Des Moines International Airport. Um, we've been utilizing of a twenty-two hundred and forty square foot building or structure, we've been utilizing a hundred and twenty square foot of that space for the last eight years, and and it's just that uh, we feel that uh primary purpose of wanting to uh, to demolition of the building is that, as you saw in the photos, that over the last eight years, the landscaping has grown up um, along Fluor Drive. Uh, when we utilize the Des Moines International Airport ourselves, uh, we feel that uh Jet Parking along with the the gas station at the corner of Highview Drive and Fluor Drive is uh the first thing that uh folks see when when they're, when they're leaving the airport. The, we've named the the current structure the Blue Monster that uh, we just don't feel that overall it's been that slightly of a, of a structure that has the the utilization of a hundred and twenty square feet. Um. We uh, staff has recommended that on the parcel, that there's currently three parcels um, that we had zoned in uh two thousand thirteen that uh the applicant has agreed to all of the general comments that are on the site plan, but one of them being that we will take all three parcels and turn them into one as part of this improvement, but back to my point is that we feel that we can do a whole lot better with landscaping along Peyton Avenue, some additional landscaping along Fluor Drive, and ultimately have a much better curb appeal um, to the folks that uh are newly arriving to our community that uh, um, we feel that, you know, that it'll certainly be a benefit. The staff had commented that uh the office or the structure that we're going to construct that's showing on the site plan, it is actually at the entrance of uh, of the site, it'll be at the southeast corner. And it is uh two hundred and forty square feet. And it's, it's uh eight foot wide and twenty foot long. It will have a ADA bathroom. And the only purpose for that office is to store our security equipment and our employee or our shuttle driver um, when uh, when they're not running back and forth to the airport. The, there's also a comment made that uh we're increasing the parking uh or the number of spaces. Um, if we are increasing the number of spaces, it's certainly minimal. Um, if we are increasing the number of spaces, it's certainly minimal. I think maybe three or four at, at best. Um, that we are going to be eliminating some parking that was on Peyton Drive that, you know, I'd say is somewhat outside of the, the Finston area. And then there was some parallel parking along Peyton Drive, which is uh, the concrete um, is going to be tore out, and that'll be put into green space, which goes back to my comment that I, that one of our goals is uh, is curb appeal and uh, have it more attractive, not only along Fluor Drive, but certainly along Peyton Avenue. Um. The, I reviewed the, the comments from the neighbor, and I uh, I understand that uh, you know, their concern of, of car alarms. Um, but I think that that's something that, you know, probably happens everywhere. Um, it's not isolated just to our parking lot. Uh, but ultimately uh, with uh, with the new lighting, um, with the new landscaping, the new structure, that uh, we feel that we're, we're certainly putting our, our investment to something that uh, that the neighborhood should be proud of in our design. I think that's all I really have to say.
Okay, Dave. Alright, well, very clearly presented. Thank you. Um, board members, do we have any questions for Mr. Albright? Okay, alright, seeing none. Thank you, Dave. We'll check back with you in a few minutes. Um, what we'll do now, um, and we need to go through this in order. Do we have anybody that wishes to speak in support of the applicant? I want to make that clear first. We've got some hands up, but it's important, nobody has to run to the front of the line. We will recognize people when the time is right. Is there anybody that wishes to speak in support?
Yes.
I do, I do have a hand up.
You wanna be again?
Okay, I'm gonna recognize Connie Fisher. Dave, would, would, would you um, just hang tight there? Connie, are you here to speak in support of the applicant's request?
No.
No.
No. Okay, so hold on just a minute. I saw you had your hand up. Uh, we're just asking for people who are in support of the applicant's request at the time. Alright, is there anybody that wants to speak in support? Seeing none. Now Connie, would you like to speak in opposition?
Yes.
Alright, you've got up to five minutes. We just need your complete name and address, and you've got the floor.
Okay, I'm Connie Fisher. My address is twenty-fifteen Peyton Avenue, Des Moines, Iowa, five oh three one five. I've lived at my property for fifty years. Uh, the Jet Parking, number one, um, he talked about um, how the building, the color of it and everything, but they were the ones that painted it. Number one, but that's neither here nor there. My problem is, is the honking of the horns um, for the security. Um, you know, there's nothing that I can really think of that they can do to take care of that, but we don't need any more cars honking their horns. The parking lot is never, since they've been there, totally full. So I really don't know why they need more room. As far as taking care of the lot, that uh, fence that they put up, the wooden fence, it's in terrible shape. The boards are curved, curled, I should say. Um, and, and that's all my reasoning for opposing this.
Okay, alright, well Connie, I do thank you for your comments, both in writing as well as your testimony today.
Thank you.
You bet. Do we have anybody else that wishes to speak in opposition to this item? Uh, hit raise hand icon in Zoom or hit star nine on your phone. Going once, going twice, same thing for anyone who wishes to speak in neutrality. Seeing none. Um, any comments from the zoning enforcement officer?
Chair members of the board, no comment.
Okay. And uh, do we have any final questions for city staff from the board? Okay, don't see any. Um, so, uh, Dave, you have an opportunity. We can give you up to three minutes as a rebuttal. So since there was somebody that spoke in opposition as well as a card, is there anything you want to address related to their comments or statements? And let's see, Dave, you just need, I think, unmute yourself. Are you participating by phone? Yeah, there you go.
Okay, David Albright again. Um, I don't know that we have any further comments uh, in support, just, you know, would, would comment to uh, Mrs. Fisher that uh, you know, we will continue to do our best in uh, in car alarms in the event that they were to go off. And then part of our improvement of the property, uh, we will be adding additional landscaping that will be on uh, um, east side of our property along that uh, wooden fence that Connie speaks of. Um, we will certainly address if, if there's any repair in the fence. If that would make uh, Mrs. Fisher happy, we would certainly entertain doing that as well.
Sure. Okay, thank you, Dave. Alright, we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation, and I'm just gonna jump in myself. Uh, I'm a South Sider. I go by this, if not once a day, pretty darned close. Um, uh, the property is generally pretty well taken care of. Um, as Dave mentioned, and this is not a criticism of him, but, but yeah, we've got the main entrance to the airport there. A, a lot of the older buildings are maybe past their useful lifespan or what they were originally intended and built for, and maybe don't have the kind of newest shine on the penny for a welcome to Des Moines. Um, obviously, at any national or international airport, uh, generally right outside the front gate, there's parking lots. And from what I've seen presented here, and as Dave stated, uh, he'd be making the property look even better by getting rid of the quote, "Blue Monster." Uh, the small accessory building would be less than noticeable. It would amount to probably what I would call a uh, toll booth. And it looks like he's gonna put in more landscaping as a buffer between himself and the neighborhood. Um, this is located right along Fluor Drive. Fluor Drive's a busy street. I'm sure there are honking horns on Fluor Drive. I'm sure there are loud exhausts and, and Harley motorcycles on Fluor. I don't think that this expansion is going to add to any noise significantly. And even if it wasn't expanded, I don't have any oversight on this board, um, if somebody can't find their car alarm key. So um, I'm gonna make a motion to grant the requested conditional use permit uh, based on the fact that it will not um, unduly impact uh, the general area, including noise, light, welfare, safety, or, or character. Would there be a second?
I'll second, Mel.
Alright, so motion by PIN, second by Gare. Uh, we'll take roll call. All those in favor of granting the requested conditional use permit will reply aye, oppose nay. Tyler will take roll.
Dave Gare?
Aye.
Justin Gross?
Aye.
Marlese Jones?
Hi.
Cindy Smith?
Aye.
Lynn Carlson?
Aye.
And Mel Pins?
Aye.
A motion carries six zero one with Nathan abstaining.
Okay, alright. Okay, alright, um, as noted before, we'll have that decision in order uh, for you, Dave, uh, probably about a week from now. So um, we appreciate your investment in your property and keeping things spiffy on Fluor Drive, so thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Have a good evening.
You too.
Okay, um, so moving on, now this will take us to um, item number four. And before we begin our discussion, we've got two items that I believe are related to the same appellant. Do we have a representative of the appellant here? I want to just go over that before we get into the case itself. Is there a representative that is prepared to give testimony on items four or five as that may be needed on behalf of the applicant? Um, if you're here on behalf of the applicant for items four or five, hit the raise hand icon in Zoom or star nine on your phone. Alright, Bert, I don't see anybody. Do you?
I don't see anybody either, so.
Okay, so staff, did, did, did you have uh, something you wanted to add to this? Any changes to this item or any news?
Mister Chair, this is um, Judy Parks Cruz, your legal counsel. Um, at, in earlier um, meeting this morning, um, I was advised that compliance had been achieved for both items four and five. Um, knowing that and knowing that there was counsel representing this particular applicant on both charges, um, I went and contacted the attorney to let them know that compliance has been achieved, and there really would not be any action that the board could be taking at this meeting because there's nothing to order them to do. Um, my understanding, um, although I was hoping for an email to confirm that they understood that, um, I told them it would not be necessary, but I, I would, I had hoped to hear back from them that they weren't not, were not going to attend. I am taking that they, they got the message by the fact they are not here. We may wish to ask if there's anyone who wishes to speak to either of these, either for or against, so they are not unnecessarily delayed in getting on with the rest of their day.
Sure, sure, yep. Um, yeah, and I want to come back. I just got a question for you, Judy. But yeah, for the record, is there anybody here that wants to speak on items four or five from any perspective? Either opposed, concerned, for, against, neutral? Uh, hit, hit the Zoom raise hand icon on your computer or star nine on your phone. Okay, seeing none. So, so Judy, in essence, this began with the city's case, and the appeal would be, hey, the property owner or the responsible party doesn't agree uh, with your citation, but you now say it's in compliance, so there's nothing left to appeal. Um, if compliance has been achieved, I'm assuming the city has inspection documentation and probably a photographic record that the compliance has been achieved. Is that correct?
Uh, that is correct. I would um, cede the floor to uh, Ms. Donovan. She's able to speak more directly to uh, that information.
Yeah, and, and the reason I ask that, Judy, I'd be happy to hear from Sue Ann. Um, if staff has documented that compliance has been, been completed, uh, then there is no grounds for an appeal because there is compliance, and therefore there would be nothing for us to consider here at this board in an appeal. Um, Sue Ann, you got anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, Chair, members of the board, I did confirm with staff this morning that they had closed the case. The, the um, issue has been resolved. There's no longer illegal parking of inoperable, unsafe, unlicensed or junk vehicles. So we have no interest in proceeding with this.
Okay, so I, I guess depending since, since the other party appealed this, I guess I would state for the record, um, as there's nothing to appeal, there's no grounds for this board to hear this case, and therefore no standing by an appellant. Um, so does the board need to take an action to state such, or how do we move on? What do you say, Judy?
Um, oops, I was not sure if I had unmuted myself. Um, at this um, juncture, I think it would be fair to dismiss, uh, a motion to dismiss um, each of these being made by one of the board um, members, seconded, and then voted on, would be an appropriate action. Um, I will note that they are two separate properties because of the way this one site um, lays, but I think you could join them in one motion.
Okay, yeah. And for those who may be familiar, this is at the southeast corner of, of Hickman Road and Merle Hay Road, where Merklin Parkway juts to the southeast there. It's an automotive uh, repair location. Um, yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and, and make a motion on items four and five. Um, both are, are, are related to the same owner and operations. I'm gonna make uh, a motion to combine those for consideration, and in that consideration, uh, as the compliance has been met and the city no longer has a compliance case, uh, there is nothing to appeal here. So I'm gonna make a motion to dismiss any Board of Adjustment review on items four and five as we have no appeal to hear. Uh, would there be a second on that?
Mister Chair, I'll second. This is Cindy.
Alright, so motion by PIN, second by Smith. All those in favor to uh, uh, dismiss consideration of the appeal here. Uh, you answer yes or nay. Tyler?
Alright, Justin Gross?
Aye.
Marlese Jones?
Aye.
Cindy Smith?
Aye.
Nathan, Nathan Blake, you with us?
Hey, Nathan, are you, are you back yet? Are you on mute?
I would assume he's still away.
Okay, uh, Lynn Carlson? Dave Gare?
Aye.
And Mel Pins?
Aye.
Motion carries six zero one.
Okay, alright. Okay, well, thanks for helping us through that, just on, I guess, procedure and technicality, so.
Certainly.
Yes, alright, well, that will move us on then to item number six. Item six is a conditional use approval request at thirty-four twenty Martin Luther King Junior Parkway.
Mister Chair, members of the board, Bert Drost, planning staff for the City of Des Moines. The requested conditional use would allow for use of a twenty-two-hundred-square-foot tenant bay, which is known as thirty-four twenty-four Martin Luther King Junior Parkway, or a liquor store. The subject property is um, a portion of the Harding Hills Shopping Center on the west side of Martin Luther King Junior Parkway, just to the south of the um, I guess, junction where Douglas Avenue merges with Euclid Avenue. Um, so the yellow boundaries um, represents the parcel on which the um, tenant bay is located. It's generally in this area right here. Just for point of reference, the Hy-Vee at Harding Hills is uh, down here. So it's a few tenant bays north of the Hy-Vee. Um, the site meets the separation distance requirement, is it's not within five hundred feet of any church, park, school, or daycare, and it's also at least one, or a quarter of a mile from any other uh, liquor store, gas station, or limited um, retail sales establishment that cert or sells alcoholic liquor. The Hy-Vee uh, here on this property to the south does sell liquor, but because the um, business is more than twelve thousand square feet, it's not subject to the separation distance requirement. Hopefully that makes sense. Uh, so here's the floor plan that the applicant submitted. The front door is here to the right, and then they're showing the beer um, would be located uh, at the back of the store, and then the um, liquor would be within refrigerator or within shelves uh, along the side there. Here's a photo, um, believed to be in this general area here by H and R block. Um, you have Hy-Vee at the left, and then a rental store to the right. This is the view from Martin Luther King Junior Parkway. Uh, you can see there's a subway in the parking lot, and then just one more photo, the entrance. And as I mentioned, they meet the separation distance requirements for a liquor store. Um, we also felt that this location generally satisfies the criteria necessary for granting the conditional use. So we have recommended approval, subject to the standard conditions. The first of those being that the liquor store is limited to the existing twenty-two-hundred-square-foot tenant bay. And um, I'll leave the rest of the um, conditions here on the screen. I won't go through them all, but it's, these are the standard conditions that the board has applied to um, liquor stores. And I'll come back to this when it's uh, time to make the motion. So um, the only comments we received were from uh, Nancy Bunker. Initially, um, she had told us she didn't get a comp or a postcard, uh, but then later she said she did find the postcard after all. Um, but she had also mailed this in. After she mailed this, that's when she sent the emails. But um, she just has her concerns with um, the liquor store. Again, she said she did not get a postcard, but she later acknowledged that it was in the envelope after all. That was the only communication we had.
Okay.
And so they own the property uh, that's kind of backs up to the commercial reasons.
Is that a residential property, or is that?
Yeah, yeah.
Owned or occupied?
I believe it's a rental property.
The rental, okay. All right. All right, anything else you want to add for us, Bert?
That's all I had.
All right, board members, any questions for Bert? Uh, Bert, one question I'd throw at you, just anecdotally. Are you aware that at any time, had there been any, um, liquor, tobacco, alcohol stores in that kind of strip mall adjacent to Hy-Vee?
Yes, at, um, at one point, Hy-Vee had a Regal Liquors Store that was immediately next to the Hy-Vee store, but they have since relocated all of, um, that liquor and alcohol sales with, to be in the Hy-Vee.
All right, you've, you've got a good memory, yeah, because I thought there was something in there, but I couldn't place who, what, or when, so.
Right.
Not necessarily in that direct bay, but, but, but it, but adjacent to the Hy-Vee there in that general building, okay? Um, anybody else have any questions for Bert? Okay, all right, so, um, let us move on to, uh, the applicant. So applicant or representative of the applicant, it's your turn to present. Uh, you've got up to ten minutes to present your reasoning for your conditional use permit request, and we just need you to start off with your name and address.
Right, you should be good to speak.
Yes, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, good afternoon, staff member. Uh, my name is Auel Mayer. My address is, uh, forty forty-two Hubble Avenue, uh, Des Moines. So I would, uh, like to, uh, open this store, uh, basically on, uh, the store, the store address is, uh, it's thirty-four forty Martin Luther King Parkway. Uh, I would like to do something convenient for our community, and I would like to to get, uh, to know the community more better, but I, I guess I would go according to what, uh, the city approval on the location, and I would like to provide whatever necessary to make sure all the community are all the community are, uh, safe, basically.
Sure, understandable. Um, so would you be okay with taking some questions here from the board?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chair, this is Cindy. I'm just curious about hours of operation.
Uh, the hours of operation are gonna be, uh, from nine to eleven.
Okay, all right. And that's daily, I'm assuming?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, so it'd be seven days a week. Uh, Mr. Mayor, just to the best of your knowledge, how, how late is the Hy-Vee store open next to you? You, you know?
Uh, I'm not really sure if they open twenty-four seven or to midnight. I'm not really sure the hour of the Hy-Vee.
Right, but it's probably open at least until eleven PM on a nightly basis.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. All right, all right. Anybody else have any questions for Mr. Mayor? Okay, all right, sir. Well, we'll check back with you in a few minutes on this. We'll see if others in the audience have some thoughts as well. Thank you. Okay, is there anybody who wishes to speak in support of the applicant's request to receive this conditional use permit? Anybody wants to speak in support? Uh, we just need you to hit raise hand icon in Zoom or hit star nine on your phone to be recognized. All right, don't see anybody there. Anybody that wishes to speak in opposition? Same sign. All right, seeing none. Um, anybody wishes to speak in neutrality on this issue? All right, I don't see any signs there, so, uh, Sue Ann, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Chair, members of the board, I have nothing to add.
Okay, and, um, any further questions for staff from the board? All right, hearing none. We'll go ahead and close the public portion and go to board deliberation. Any initial thoughts on this, board members? Anybody?
This is Lynn Carlson. As we mentioned before, um, that there was a liquor store in this area recently, and the one concern from a constituent was somebody worried about their property values, and I don't see where that has actually been proven, uh, rationale. Um, so I am in favor of going ahead and approving this and having another business in that area who's wanted to be part of the community. So those are my thoughts.
Sure, so, sounds like thoughts at the moment. Uh, I know the applicant had said that they would be closed by eleven PM nightly, which is frankly, pretty reasonable, and I'm, there's another location that sells alcohol, even though they don't need any special approvals from us. Uh, that's, that's, you know, in essence, in the same parking lot, uh, they're open till at least eleven, um, I would assume on a daily basis. Um, I think it might be reasonable, though, if the applicant says, hey, we're only gonna be open till eleven, we could have that as, uh, potentially a condition if the board was inclined to approve this and say that they'll close at eleven PM nightly, and perhaps not, not reopen until, um, you know, at least six hours thereafter. I think we had something like that, um, in a past case. So anybody have any other thoughts or would want to make a motion with, with anything? I'll, I'll go ahead and just make a motion then to grant approval of the requested conditional use subject to staff conditions and adding in a condition that the business shall close by eleven PM nightly, uh, with a minimum hours of closure of at least, um, six hours. Um, Bert or Judy, did we have something, some language similar to that recently?
Uh, maybe not real recently, but I think we have something like that that we can model it from.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I'm thinking of the one on Southwest sixty-third Street a couple of months ago.
Yes, yes. Okay, all right, um, yeah, so I, I think the intent's clear with the motion. Would there be a second on that motion?
Sure, I would, uh, second that.
All right, motion by Pins and second by Gross. All those in favor of granting the conditional use permit will say aye, opposed will be nay, Tyler will take role.
Uh, Cindy Smith?
Aye.
Marlis Jones?
Aye.
Justin Gross?
Aye.
Dave Gare?
Aye.
Lynn Carlson?
Aye.
Nathan, are you with us yet? Okay, and Mel?
Aye.
So, once again, motion carries six zero one.
All right, okay, all right. Well, Mr. Mayor, we wish you well with, uh, your, your business. If you operate within these, uh, guidelines, um, uh, it should be beneficial for all, so I appreciate your time today, and staff will get that approval to you next week. Okay, that will move us on to item seven, a zoning variance request at twenty-five thirty-five Hubble Avenue.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, this is Eric Lundey, Senior City Planner. I don't know why it wasn't letting me unmute, but it finally did, so. Um, this item, uh, is a property that was the former, uh, Kmart property at, uh, Hubble near Easton. That's been converted to, uh, self-service storage use and also includes, um, display of rental trucks and vans, uh, uh, for moving. So it's a, it's a commercially used site, uh, in the interim of going into the building and, and making site improvements uh, to the premise and having approval under the previous code. The code rezoned the property in twenty nineteen, and, uh, because of the, uh, federal insurance rate map designations for this property, a majority of the property was zoned as the F flood district. Um, that district does not, uh, permit new buildings, uh, and there's no signage allowance in the code as it's written, uh, for that district. Uh, so the appellant has proposed a sign program for their business, uh, and you can see there in the proposal, the, there would be four wall-mounted signs on the west facade of the building with a cumulative total of nine hundred and thirty-seven square feet. One mount, wall-mounted sign on the east facade for a hundred and sixty-five square feet, two wall-mounted signs on the south facade of the building with a cumulative three hundred and forty-six square feet, uh, just, uh, one wall-mounted sign on the north facade of the building with a hundred and sixty square feet. One thing I should point out is the building isn't square with the cardinal directions, but, um, generally, the west side would be the Hubble-facing side for you to have a point of reference. Um, then they're also proposing freestanding signs on both Hubble and Easton. That would be a hundred square feet in area. This results in the four variances that you see there. Again, they're essentially for amounts of signage and numbers of signs over zero signs allowed and zero area allowed. This is a, uh, outline of the site. You can see the, there's a very small portion at the very west southwest corner that is zoned in the MX three district. Otherwise, the balance is really in the F district now. This is looking, uh, kind of from that portion that was MX three zoned at the, the west side of the building, as we call it, that fronts or fronts towards, uh, Hubble Avenue. This is looking at the south side that would front or face Easton Boulevard. And this is the north side that you would see approaching from, uh, going southwest on Hubble, you know, coming towards the building. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to get a good shot of the east side of the building, which would be the, the backside of the building, essentially, back of house. I'm gonna zoom in so you can see, this is the actual um, signages that, that are proposed. Um, the north side, there would be a panel that would, would show a sign there. Again, they're kind of photographic, but they are considered signage. The south side facing Easton would have these, signs proposed. Um, these are, these would not be considered directional. These are kind of in excess of what we would allow as directional signs. And then the east side, which is the backside of the building, uh, has a s- sign proposed on the, the upper portion. And then the west side has the mo- the four signs that would be proposed. Again, s- some more photographic signs in nature in terms of the graphic content in this area, and then the one over the, the entrance canopy area. Uh, they provided their application. I'll give you a, a moment to read this communication from the application. I'm gonna move on. Please let me know if there's anybody that still needs more time with this. This is the staff report, and it contains the sign table. Um, you can see that F district is not a, a column that's even on the table, um, which is essentially the, uh, zero allowance that is being varied from for each of the signs that are proposed. Some, again, some history that the property was previously zoned as shopping center, um, and then, uh, because of the flood designation in twenty nineteen with the updates to the federal insurance rate maps, the, the zoning map update for the entire city reflected the, the federal insurance rate map changes, and, uh, those areas were rezoned to F district, F flood district.
Okay.
Um, staff, you know, is, uh, look, has looked at the requested variances again, um, it's, they're allowed to continue their use of the property as they exist. Um, they, they are not, um, deprived of all use. We did not believe that the proposal met the criteria, but also staff is cognizant of the fact that the board may find that this does meet the test for variance. Uh, one thing I did want to point out is that the amounts of signage that they are proposing do exceed the MX one district, uh, as an example. Um, the reason I use this example is because there's some discussion that, uh, there may be future text amendments proposed that would give MX one, um, sign, sign allowances to districts that don't earn signage or uses in, in, uh, where they're non-conforming.
Right.
So, I just want to make that comparison and I'll also show you that on the chart, but we are recommending denial based on the finding that we didn't believe they demonstrated the, um, conformance with the criteria necessarily to establish the unnecessary hardship for granting the variance. We did get cards. This one's from the Accent Neighborhood, I should point out. Um, I think they're supportive of the cleanup that's occurred with this property. Uh, this is the, um, consent map. And I do have the chart here, and I want to make a point here of kind of, uh, just so you can have some comparison. In the, the MX one district, I pointed out, they were in excess in general of these provisions in terms of what they were proposing. Um, there may be less the MX three district, which would be what a very small portion of the site is, is zoned MX three. Um, and the, uh, Gordman's site on the opposite side of Hubble, um, is, the building is in the MX three and would earn MX three signs, um, for use. Um, so I wanted to present that, that the number of signs. Um, the other thing I should point out is there's a provision in the code that allows uh, signage on ea- earned on each frontage when there's more than a, a single frontage for the, for the property, so they essentially, they essentially would earn double the number and double the, the area here. In this case, the building's large enough, it's maxing out. It would max out the, the max for each sign, so there would be, uh, for example, in the MX three, there would be two signs on each street frontage that could be maximum at two hundred square feet. Um, the other thing I should point out is the monument signs in both of those zoning districts would max out at seventy-five. would max out at seventy five. They are proposing a hundred. So they are also still proposing in excess of what would be allowed if it would, would have been zoned correctly.
Okay.
Would you go back to the accent neighborhood response, please? Thank you. Okay.
Eric, this is Nathan. What is the stated rationale for the city council's prohibition of signage in flood districts? Or maybe it's not stated.
Yeah, I don't think there's any stated rationale. They just didn't ever account for since buildings aren't allowed, there isn't any earnings based on the way that the sign code is written. So there, there wasn't a provision included in the, in the current code that gave allowances to non-conforming uses in districts that don't allow, you know, don't allow that use. In the previous code, there was a provision that allowed, for example, like a commercial use to have some minimal sign earnings in districts where they weren't allowed as a principal use, but they existed as a legal non-conforming. That isn't included in the current code. There's discussion about incorporating that into the code in the future, but it hasn't occurred yet. So we're, this is where we're at.
Yeah.
I've heard that passively, Eric, but the city council has just gone through an extensive rezoning process to consider, among other things, signs. And they explicitly chose not to include that and didn't allow for any sort of signage in flood areas. Right?
Well, yeah, I mean, they, I don't know if they explicitly the fact that it's omitted from the table. There's, I mean, they didn't, they didn't allow, yeah, they adopted a code that didn't give allowances for flood districts, correct?
Mr. Chair, this is Cindy. I'm just piggyback, piggybacking off Nathan's comments. It seems like this maybe needs to go back to council. I'm not sure what the process would be for that, but you know, they're talking about floodplains and Eric, I thought I heard you say buildings should not be built on floodplains, but we have situations where buildings are built on floodplains and we had a similar situation with Joppa, I think last month. That's built in a flood, the building was built in a floodplain and they were asking for some signage. And for, for this particular building, it was rezoned.
This, both buildings were very rezoned in a similar fashion. This is very, very much the same scenario that Joppa faced.
Yeah.
But as I said, that there, the council is in discussions about making updates to the code that hasn't occurred yet. So this is their process they're following at the moment.
Yeah.
This is Judy Parks Cruz. I might add, you had directed that this particular board communicates the concern about this particular lack of provision, I guess is the way I'd put it in the current code. So they are in receipt of that communication as well as a number of other things to be considered, but it is one that has been presented to them.
Yeah.
Thanks, Judy.
Yeah. So board members, there's, there's, there's a couple of things of relevance here and we may need to kind of come back to this on this agenda item. I, I do want to hear from the appellant, but then we do have opportunity for zoning board of adjustment to speak and we can ask more questions. But the fundamental issue here that I think a lot of you are asking about, while every case has its own merits, in a rare occasion, which we do once in a while, this board did write a letter to the, to the city council. And we asked that there be a zoning code review by staff for consideration of allowance of some signage in an F district for a pre-existing building. And we've got that up on the screen here now. My favorite kind of business letter is one that's direct and to the point, and this one is. So I just like everybody to take a look at that for the moment and we can come back to it for discussion. But can, can everybody see that? Okay. If you can't, let me know. And the second to the last paragraph is really where it's at. So.
Although I will say Mel, that last paragraph, I mean, maybe it's not in need of immediate action, but maybe don't sit on it forever.
Well, yeah, I was, yeah, I, I, I think what, what, what we were trying to do is, is not, you know, push it in next month or, or anything, but it's my understanding that there are other changes in the zoning ordinance that may or may not. I mean, it's just like a, a new model of a car. There's a few squeaks and loose things that need fixed. So there's probably going to be a time in the near term when there'll be some changes coming up. And it's not like I anticipate seeing a lot of these, but ironically, yeah, we just had one in February and now here's another one or in January. Now here's another one. But I think what I'd like to do, if it's okay with all, if anybody's got a specific question just on what Eric's presented, great. If not, I'd like to go ahead and hear from the applicant and then we can come back around and see how some pieces fit together. That sound okay? All right. Okay. All right. So let's go ahead and have the applicant present and give their reasoning for their request for variance. I'm guessing that Randy Dixon is the one that will be presenting. So we'll go ahead and turn the floor over to him. Just restate your name, your address as relevant, and you got up to 10 minutes to give us your reasoning for your variance. All right. Have we recognized Randy Burt? So Randy, you are on mute at this time. If you're participating by phone, all right, go ahead. You look like you're clear.
All right. Can you hear me now?
Yes, gotcha.
Okay, fantastic. My name's Randy Dixon. I'm with the U-Haul Company. Our address is sixty three ten Douglas in Des Moines. And obviously, you know why, why we're here. We've we finally come to the point where we can entertain applying signage to the building and then found out that the zoning had changed and puts us where we are today. We've, we've invested nearly five million dollars in this property and we believe it's, we've put forth a beautiful product and we'd like to just put the diamond in the ring now and really, really finish it up. My belief is that a business without signage that speaks to the consumer is going to have a very tough uphill battle in realizing a return on the investment. Well, I believe we've had good response from the, everyone in the area. We've been very busy. I believe people like us there. And so being able to put, put the signage on the building to really communicate to the, to the public is, is very important to us. And that's why we're here today.
All right. Well, Randy, are you prepared to take some questions if our board has any for you?
I sure am.
All right, board members. Anything that Randy can answer for you?
This is Marlis. I have one.
Go ahead.
Randy, have you received customer feedback that they were not able to find you because there was no signage?
I, I have not personally received that feedback. No.
Okay. I was just curious because it's pretty clear what you do at that location with all the vehicles parked outside. But that's it. Thank you.
All right. Other questions for Randy?
Yes.
This is Dave here. How many other locations like this do you guys have in the greater Des Moines area? I know there's one out, one on Alice's Road, maybe?
Yeah, that's one of our other new ones is the, the old Atlantic Bottling Building. That's a recent development. And then I have three other existing ones that we've had. Probably for around forty years.
Okay. How many of those don't have signs?
They all have signs.
Say that. I think this is a, I don't know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be pushing for signs on this deal. I don't think he should have to pay for mistake or an oversight or this building was in floodplain, probably before it was determined to be a floodplain. So not having a building, I think, was gonna be too bad.
Dave, yeah, Dave, I'd say at this stage, if you got a question for Randy to ask that, but, but we can have that discussion when we get to it.
Yeah, no, he answered my question. Thanks.
All right. Other questions for Randy? Randy, here, here's some deep thinking here. So you have applied for a variance because you're allowed zero signage in the flood district. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. So I get that, but it's kind of like, hey, yeah, I can't have any. So I'm going to apply for whatever kind of sign I want, including ones that are really big. That gosh, they, they would even need a variance in a comparative district if I was not in a floodplain. So I'm going to scratch my head here a little. If we were inclined to think about granting a variance on this, what if we were inclined to say, well, we'll approve signage for your property and building, but you need to do it with a commensurate zoning district that's similar in or around the area, which to me at the most would be MX three. So right away, I believe the signings you've proposed wouldn't even, it'd need a variance in, in another zoning district. So you've, you've kind of, I don't think it was by design, but by default, you're, you're kind of asking for your cake and eat it too here. So if we were inclined to grant a variance and say, yep, you can have signage there, that's reasonable. A business should have signage. But hey, it's going to be limited to the MX three requirement. Do you think you could live with that?
Yes, I believe we could.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for Randy? Okay. All right. Well, thank you, sir. We'll see if we've got some other comments here, pro or con, and then we'll check back with you in a few.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay. Is there anybody that wants to speak in support of the applicant's request? If so, hit the raise hand icon in Zoom or hit pound nine on your phone and we'll recognize you. Anybody to speak in support? Seeing none, anybody wishes to speak in opposition to granting a variance to allow signs of any type here? Same sign. Anybody in neutrality? All right. Any comments from the zoning enforcement officer?
Chair members, the board, Sue Ann Donovan, zoning enforcement officer for the city of Des Moines. They, they don't meet the variance test. That's, that's pretty clear. The letter that the board did send to council is now in the consideration for amendments to the ordinance, which should be coming back to council, I believe in June or, or the first part of July for final consideration, which if adopted would allow a level of signage in, for this building and all other buildings currently existing in floodways or non-conforming buildings in other districts. But the rezoning of this property of floodway was absolutely predicated on the FEMA flood maps that we adopt in order to maintain our insurance rating for our, for our citizens, our residents in the city of Des Moines. So it was, it was a necessary rezoning that we had to undertake. And we are addressing the, the need for signage in these areas. So I would submit that this variance be denied because it doesn't meet the test and they come back in after the code amendments and seek signage that is appropriate and allowed by the code.
Mm hmm. Okay. All right. Any questions for Sue Ann or city staff from the board?
Yeah, I, I do. This is Nathan. Just so I understand, if we vote to deny the variance today and the zoning code changes, as Sue Ann just kind of laid out, it would not be prohibited from complying with the new zoning code, even though it was something similar to what they've requested today. Is that, I, I think I have that right, but I just want to make sure Judy or Sue Ann or whomever, that I have that right.
Yes, thanks for posing that question. This is Judy and you, you are correct. If it is, if the code is amended to make this a permitted use, that is signage in the F district, then they would be able to seek within compliance what the district then allows.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for staff? Okay. All right. Randy, while we didn't have anybody that spoke in opposition, just as a courtesy, I'll give you a quick opportunity here. Is there anything you want to say in closing? You don't have to say anything if you don't want to. And then we'll go to the board's deliberation. So is there anything you want to add, Randy? Just unmute yourself if so.
Okay, yes. Just a couple of quick things. I mean, it was mentioned that the, that our, that our trucks out front convey a clear message to the community about what we're about. The, the problem with that is, is that a major portion of our, of our business there is inside climate controlled self-storage. And without being able to communicate that, that portion of the business would, would suffer a terrible loss. And and it might be a silly point, but I'm just, it's more of a, of a question, I guess, in that I'm confused as to how having signs on a building affects the fact that it's in a flood zone in any way. I understand possibly with a ground sign and having to meet flood standards with that particular signage, I understand that part, but these are building mount signs. Even if the, even if the building did flood, it wouldn't negatively impact the area with having those on it. So that's really all I had. I appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Randy. Okay, we'll close the public portion and go to board deliberation. So any initial thoughts from anyone here? So this is just board members now.
Go ahead.
I believe that they should have signs and we agreed this before and wrote the letter to city council for this reason. And believing that, you know, the city council and the zoning ordinance did not want to encourage people to build in flood zones. And again, I forgot that there are some properties in there already. I am inclined with going ahead and allowing them to have some signs on the building. The amount they have requested is way too much. I don't think we should be up at the variance level, maybe at, with the MX three. I think at the very most is what I would say is
Thoughts from other board members?
This is Marlis, and I had not thought about the whole storage issue when it came to signage, but I'm of the opinion that we really need to wait to see if there's any changes made. And let them go forward at that point in time.
All right, Dave, do you want to comment?
Yeah, they've spent a tremendous amount of money on this building. I think there's got to be some wiggle room here for some signage for them to where they can accomplish what they want to try to accomplish and identify that the uses, and there are multiple uses at the building and for this business. So I, I don't, I'm inclined not to wait. But let's come up with something that's reasonable based on the location of that building and what they need to identify that business based on the tremendous investment they've made in that and, and the improvements that they've created, I think, for that area with that investment that they made in that building. I don't think we should make that.
Right.
We didn't for Joppa either. And directly across the street, there was buildings that had signage. So I think I'm, I'm, I'm gonna figure something out that's gonna help them today.
Right. Okay. Anybody else?
I would just agree with Dave and Lynn.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Cool.
Here.
Justin?
Yeah, just wanna weigh in, I guess. Um, I believe this is a legislative issue that we've done our job by bringing it to the council's attention. And unfortunately, it hasn't been addressed yet. But until then, I think we have to be in our confines of our, of our role and responsibilities. So, uh, you know, it doesn't meet the variance test. I mean, I guess we could, maybe we could table this issue until June. I don't know, or I guess would be denied and then they come back, as pointed out.
Nathan, do you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, I, I think Justin said probably what, pretty close to what I was gonna say. I'm, I'm really happy that I came back in for a sign variance decision.
I am just glad you're back in.
Yeah, so yeah, Justin and Marlis kind of stayed to my position, I think, pretty well. So I'm interested to hear what the vote says, Mel.
Yeah. Um, well, in pulling everybody here, I think that does, let's see, it comes back around here. Everybody puts great thought into these, and what we always have to do is we have to look at, you know, what does the ordinance say? What is the ordinance based on? And even more than that, what is the intent? Um, why do we even have flood districts and zoning? We don't want people to build in a flood district. Why? We don't want them to build in a flood district. I'm gonna give the natural resources side first. We don't want to impede waters in the floodplain. When we slow down water transport, it backs up to somewhere else. And with urban development, we add more and more water. So that's one of the reasons a lot of these floodplain maps have been redesigned. Um, so we don't want people to build in a floodplain, number one. Guess what? The building was already here. Number two, we don't want people to build in a floodplain. We certainly don't want them to expand the building in a floodplain. So we don't, that's also against the zoning ordinance. Or if there's large damage to a building through fire or destruction or collapse, then they're not allowed to rebuild. But somehow we've tacked this signage ordinance thing through this new zoning ordinance. I understand no signage in a floodplain when no building is allowed into it. But when we have an existing building, this is exactly the case we had with Joppa, which was on East Euclid, south of Oliver Plaza, on the west bank of the Des Moines River. The place had been there since like nineteen fifty-eight. But we eventually have to stop and think about, all right, yeah, the variance test is a strong one, but what's the purpose of the variance test? Well, let's work backwards. First of all, if we want to grant a variance, it shouldn't alter the essential character of the locality of the land in question. This is a large building. It used to be a Kmart. You know how big that sign was? Look what was across the street. Other big signs for other big stores. Richmond Gordman back in the day. This is a commercial district. This is a major commercial district on the near northeast side of Des Moines. So I don't think that granting an allowance to have some signage would alter the essential character of the locality of the land. Even reversing from that, another key tenant of a variance test, it has to be unique circumstances that relate specifically to the land in question. Well, the land is what's in question here. The city has placed this in a floodplain. The building was already there. It was already a commercial use before the circumstances changed. Those circumstances were not of the owner's own doing. But the number one hill that anybody has to get across is you can't show that I can't make as much money or do as well. That's not good enough. You have to show that all beneficial or productive use of the land in question is gonna be impacted by this. I can't think of how it's even constitutional to say, hey, we're gonna charge you by the square foot on your property taxes because your place exists and we make our money at the city and the county and the school district, but by golly, you can't advertise at all. Good luck. I hope people can find you sucker. I do not think that a good sense of how the zoning ordinance was constructed would want to set somebody up to fail. I don't know anybody in the accent neighborhood that wants to see that hulking building sit there empty. And I frankly believe it would be almost impossible for a business to have any success. And I don't think we should deny a business to have success by saying that you can't have any signage. In essence, each case has its own unique merits, but just in January, should be right at the forefront of our mind, we had a case about Joppa. I don't care who the applicant is, whether it's an orange U-Haul company or somebody helping the homeless. Who it is isn't the issue. What it is, is for me. And we specifically granted the variance appeal on that at that time for Joppa. We didn't push it off. We didn't defer it. We didn't tell council to take care of it. We, we dealt with it then, but we already said, hey, look, this, this needs looked into because this is gonna happen a couple of times down the road, I bet. We didn't even know this U-Haul case was gonna come up. So I'm not saying we've established a precedent, but I don't see what was different about Joppa than what's different now. And maybe those that did or didn't vote for the Joppa thing, it's the same as it is now. But I had the same arguments and statements then as I do now. The board did vote by majority to, you know, ask the city to try to fix this. It may take some time. But I don't think that we should slow up a property owner and a business in the meantime. So I'm gonna make a recommendation to grant a variance to allow signage at this property, but that signage has to be within the confines of what's allowed in the MX three. And I want to add on a caveat or a condition that no further exceptions or variances will be considered related to such signage if this is approved. And Judy, I want to ask you, can, can we do that? Can I say, if it would pass, that we want to grant a variance to allow signage, but it's limited to what's allowed in the MX three without further consideration for exceptions or variances?
Um, yes, you can limit it that way. I don't know exactly what the contemplated amendment might be to the code. It may be possible that a greater amount of signage would actually be permitted by right when an amendment comes around, but you can limit it to, to that presently.
Yeah. What, what, what I'm getting at, and no offense to Randy, but they've been in front of us enough times now. I want them to get on with things. So if we grant them allowance of a signage in an MX three, I don't want them to come back a month later and go, oh, great, thanks for the MX three. Now I want an exception or variance in the MX three because I want bigger sign.
Sure.
Yeah.
So you, you are permitted to do that.
Okay, all right. So that is my motion, again, to grant the variance to allow signage, limited to an MX three with no further consideration for exceptions or variances unless subsequent ordinances would allow for a certain amount of signage.
I'll second that.
All right, so we got a second by Dave. So we'll go ahead and take a vote. If they're allowed to have a monument sign by writing the MX three, then they're allowed to have the monument sign. Yes. I'm not just, I didn't say just signage on the building. I just had a thought myself here. If, if they're allowed to have signage as appropriate in an MX three.
Chair members of the board?
I'm not gonna go ahead and allow it once, but we're kind of closed unless I'm out on a limb here. Help me out.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
This is, this is Eric Glundy, senior city planner. One consideration is to ensure compliance with floodplain development regulations.
Certainly. Yeah. Um, so they would be allowed a freestanding in the MX three, but, but is it just not allowed in a floodplain or what? I mean, there's, there's no signs allowed in the floodplain.
If you're allowing some, there's no provisions because it didn't contemplate them in a flood, flood district, so.
Exactly, yeah. So I.
I'm conveying that you may want to put stipulation that it comply with floodplain development regulation.
Well, I'm, I'm splitting hairs on my own head here with my own thoughts. So I want them to be allowed appropriate signage, which would normally be allowed in an MX three. If that doesn't include monument signs that would be allowed in MX three, then, then, then so be it. I think that's reasonable.
Hey, hey, Mel.
Yes, the city does not support the variance. But if I want to grant a variance to allow signage that would normally be allowed in an MX three, which in an MX three does include monument signs, then unless there's some construction requirement beyond the signage code, I want to allow them to have a monument sign. That's my, that's, that's my proposal here. So Judy, unless you can tell me that that's not legal from some other standpoint, what I'm proposing here would allow them to have a monument sign as well.
Well, in, in MX three, typically there is no flood review because it does consider things to already be out of the floodplain. Um, the concern I have is that if we were looking at a like amount of signage, a monument sign with the amount of face area that would be allowed in MX three would be a substantial impediment in a floodplain. I think even the applicant mentioned, you know, they could understand not allowing monument signs, but they could not understand wall signs. If you could limit it in that manner, so we're reasonably assured it's not going to impede the floodway flow, that would probably be better.
All right. So I'm gonna give a little nod here because I said earlier, we don't want to see development in the floodplain, which would impact flooding and push water around, although one single sign is probably pretty dinky. Um, then, all right, I'm gonna limit it to building mounted, wall-mounted signage allowed in MX three with no provision for a monument sign. Because I've been thinking through this, yeah. I guess I would consider that a construction that would be in the floodplain because it's gonna be on the ground. It could impede floodwater. Um, okay, so kind of back on track there. So that was my motion to allow signage on the building commensurate with what's allowed in an MX three with my reasoning for the variance. Dave, are you still good for a second?
Yes.
All right. Okay, well, we'll see how this carries the day here. So if anybody's in favor of granting the variance request as of I've proposed and Dave seconded, you'll answer with an aye. If you're opposed, it'll be nay. And we'll have Tyler do a roll call.
Nathan Blake?
Nay.
Lynn Carlson?
Aye.
Dave Gare?
Aye.
Justin Gross?
Nay.
Marlis Jones?
Nay.
Cindy Smith?
Aye.
And Mel Pins?
Aye.
My motion would carry forward three.
Okay. All righty. Okay. All right. Well, that takes care of that item. So that will move us along to, let's see. Which item are we on here now?
Item number eight.
Eight, yes. Gotta turn the page. Okay, I, I just saw Fluor Drive again and I got confused. Des Moines Airport Authority is zoning variance request in the vicinity of five thousand eight hundred Fluor Drive, and Bert will present on this one.
Yes, and Mr. Chair, members of the board, Bert Gross, planning staff for the city of Des Moines. Number eight is a request to install two freestanding monument signs for the Des Moines International Airport. The property is Zoned P two Public Civic and Institutional District, which only allows for one freestanding sign per use with a maximum area of seventy-five square feet. So they are proposing to have two freestanding signs which exceeds their allowances. So the subject property is the Des Moines International Airport along the west side of Fluor Drive. They are proposing two signs. And in this sketch here shows the future reconfiguration of the entrance here at Kohl's Drive. Kohl's Drive is the exit to the airport. It lines up with Highview to the west, I'm sorry, to the east of Fluor Drive. So they will be constructing a new entrance for the airport. The plan is to install one freestanding sign right here and then a second one further to the north in the campus. And the existing freestanding sign further north at the existing entrance would be removed. So this sketch here is probably better than the last one I was showing you. North is to your right. Again, there's one smaller sign proposed in this location right here, and then there's a second on a retaining wall along the driveway. So here's the proposed sign that would be there at the intersection itself. They are proposing a two-foot-tall base to meet our requirements. And the eight feet in height. And then here's the other sign that they're proposing. It would have, it would be much longer, but it would be a top, a two-foot-tall masonry wall. As far as our staff recommendation goes, you know, it, it was, it's tough because we realize the airport is a huge use. It's a huge, you know, I guess, complex, a large campus. But this code is clear that the use zone P two district does only allow the one freestanding sign. So in order to allow two freestanding signs, they would need a variance. And the two signs combined for an area would also exceed the seventy-five square feet of sign area allowed. So they'd need that second variance. And as we discussed on the previous item, it's not, you need to prove that without the variances, there's no other economic value of the property. Oh, it was hard to prove in this instance. So we had some comment cards come back from the properties to the east, all in favor. Uh, but, um, yeah, so our staff recommendation again is for denial. So were there any questions for me?
Anyone? Uh, Bert, just, just real quick again, I'm sure the applicant is gonna, gonna lay this out, but we've got the kind of the smaller sign DSM and then the bigger letters all spelled out one. What's the location again of the two?
So the smaller one, and again, north is to the right.
Yeah.
So when you come in the new entrance off of Fluor at Highview Drive, the smaller one would be located here at the, in the median where the inbound and outbound split. And then the second would be located on the campus, kind of to the east of the existing duck pond.
Yeah. Okay. All right. That's good enough for me. All right. Thank you. Anybody else have questions for Bert? Okay. All right. Well, let's go ahead and hear from the applicant today. We just need your name, address, and you've got up to ten minutes.
Brandon Borden with Finley Horn will speak. Kim Lee Horn?
Thank you, Bert, Mr. Chair and members of the board. My name is Brandon Borden. I'm with Kim Lee Horn and Associates representing the airport. I'm a civil engineer. Address is seven six seven Eustace Street, Suite one hundred, St. Paul, Minnesota. I guess walking through, I did send some slides in addition to what were presented before. So I'm gonna try to hit the highlights of that. I'm sure we all wish that COVID was over, so it would be a little easier to do this in person. But the, the, the airport is a different, a different animal in terms of how things happen. There is a significant economic impact, even data from twenty fourteen, which is, you know, in the process of needing to be updated, where things would be higher, shows seventy-two hundred jobs, sixty, six hundred and forty-four million dollars in economic output. Lots of benefit to off-airport spending, businesses that are served and located in Des Moines that need an airport. It's a significant impact to the city. It's a significant impact to the city, the region um and the state. And so the success of the airport is important in terms of economic hardship um and actually the region. Airports work continually, they're different than a lot of things you would find in a P two um zoning. Um, airports are a competitive industry, I've worked for s- um several over the last twenty years in term and also DOTs, cities, transit organizations, they're just different. So they're continually working to get more carriers with nonstop destinations and any advantage they can have helps them be competitive compared to their peers where people will leave and travel to other locations. Some examples of competition where there would be leakage or people leaving uh would be um just Omaha, a hundred and forty miles away, Minneapolis, St. Paul, people will travel there. Um, Eastern Iowa Ha- Airport, Kansas City International, these are just some, so the option is for people to travel to and from Des Moines and spend their dollars there or get in a car and go to um a competitor, so it is important for um the airport and you know um everyone in the area to um generally have a healthy airport that can be competitive. Um, some of the other slides that I had sent were to show some uh just examples, not because I really want to get into uh what do other airports do, but there's just this is not unique to Des Moines, um airports generally try to integrate signing into the landscaping more as forms of art and making this a place that it is to say, hey, I'm a big box store that's competing with another big box store kitty corner. Um, it is trying to leave a good memory in people's minds as they, it's the first thing they see as they go to the airport. It's the first thing they see as they go to Des Moines. It's a sense of place, so on the top is an example with a couple of signs that are, that happens to be down in Sarasota and then there's also the letter codes. Um, Eastern Iowa Airport, um I mean, just, it just, everything is a little different, there's creativity, MSP showing. Um, the next slide just shows just different materials, you won't necessarily see things consistent and I'm not saying that okay, violation of materials is what I'm getting at, it just, this is not unique to Des Moines wanting to make this a place. So um this one, there's some with metal, there's some with again, a gateway, uh two signs. I guess on the next slide, um really competition is part of it in terms of us making it a place, but the airport has invested significantly um in the Des Moines area as part of their south quadrant redevelopment. They are um moving hangars um to relocate some of the tenants where the future terminal will be. There are roadway projects that we mentioned, but we're all moving and forward to preparing for a new terminal, so uh there is significant investment. Um, I think one thing to note on the last side is there is one mile of frontage. So there's one mile of frontage and on that, the way we're discussing, we have one monument sign, I think if you compare it to other similar other government uses that would fall into P two, you could fit at least five sites, a large community center, a large county building. Um, we've got a mile with uh one airport and one monument sign and there's not a wall in terms of a building wall to mount anything on. Um, the next slide just shows phasing, so just part of, I mean, this project's been under construction for about a year now, it's gonna be wrapped up in about uh late summer and so that's the red portion and you can see we're working on design on behalf of the airport in the yellow, the pink and the orange to continue that roadway around to ultimately serve the terminal. The airport's beginning a project to look at the design of a parking ramp. There is significant investment and this is being done because the airport needs to remain competitive or everybody loses um both economically and that's just not the airport, it's employees, it's a tax base, it's different things like that. Next slide, please. Um, this is just to show, I mean, we didn't just decide, hey, there should be a couple of slides, we worked with landscape architects to really try to integrate the landscape with um art, with signing, to make this a place, what what can be done to really make people um excited that they've arrived to Des Moines, uh maintain a memory while not being intrusive to the area surrounding it all and actually making it better. The sign code, yes, we we do have um the ability to have um one monument sign, I guess as we start looking at things, as we went through this, we really considered ourselves to have um a a wall sign and a monument sign since we're up against a wall. Um, I know you can discuss building codes, but on the next slide. Um, just looking at the definitions that are included as a part of the code of ordinances. I mean, it says it can be against the wall of a building or a structure. You look at item two, a structure means a structure which is built or constructed on an edifice or building of any kind or any piece of work artificially built up or composed of parts joined together in some definite matter. Um, I would argue with some comfort level that this is definitely a structure being it's three quarry blocks high. And quite a bit of exposed height and the city of Des Moines engineering had us go through a process to sign that because it was a wall and a licensed professional engineer got to sign the calculations um because they define it as a wall as well. But we're here because, okay, there can be an argument, okay, if it has to be in a building that's different, I would disagree with the definitions, but on the next slide. Really what I want to kind of leave with is the importance, the competition is important, but how do we really make the airport a place, so this is the view, you're several hundred feet, you know, four, five hundred feet to the north where you'll actually be able to see the sign along the quarry block wall, you can see a older parking structure, a pod, um you know, some riprap along the side. Um, if you go to the the next slide, and this is going to the point of improving the character, making it a place remaining competitive. We're 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 making changes along the ponds, the riprap's different, we're gonna have grasses along it, there's gonna be the three blocks of quarry, this is two hundred and you know, fifty feet away and you're then three, four hundred feet to the north. I mean, to see the sign, there has to be a little size. It holds up the roadway behind it, it breaks up a very long wall that will be attractive with some content and you can see behind the airport's already looking at adding a facade to the parking facility to again, give it a look. Um, on the next slide, um you'll just see what that would look like at night, again, it's a feature where you have to look to your right, we're not even putting it perpendicular to the roadway, it's to basically say, gosh, that's Des Moines International Airport, this is a place I want to travel to and from. So that's that's the slide that, you know, it it's on concrete, but I mean, I could pin it to the block and I would, I would call it a wall sign, but that's kind of the one sign, you go to the next one. Again, making this a place, this is what it looks like today, obviously it's an exit, it's changed now because things have been under construction for some time. But if we flip to the next slide, there's actually such an interest in making this a place that the uh Art Foundation has been involved, the Des Moines um Art Foundation has been involved in commissioning a piece of art. And that um art called liftoff in the background is just the airport uh or the Des Moines um Art Foundation's contribution is eight hundred thousand dollars for the piece of art. I'm not e- even getting into cost because that ain't a big deal for what we're doing at the airport and it's not the point. But we have a sign, as people come from the south, they won't see the other sign to say, hey, you're actually at Des Moines. There's plantings, there's uplighting, there's irrigation and there's stone walls to just, okay, I've I've shown up somewhere, let's do something a little extraordinary.
Alright, hey Brandon, you've got less than two minutes left, I don't know how much you got left, this is all nifty stuff, but if 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 you've got a key closer here, I'd encourage you to work on it.
No, I'm, I I'm good, I I had, did go through this and actually, as we look at it, there's a slide that shows it at day, during the day, again, there's a slide that shows it at night. All part of the integrated look and on the last slide, which is um really kind of a summary is there's, there's an economic impact that competitiveness is important with at airports and if they can't remain competitive, they don't get carriers, they don't get direct flights, they lose competition and this is a component that as we showed is done at a variety airports. The length of frontage is unique and I would say, I understand there aren't other commercial airports in the in the area, but having some consideration for that and the fact that we're leaving a great first and last impression in Des Moines, I think is all important as we discussed earlier on a different land use. The welcome to Des Moines, I think is pretty critical and important for all, so I mean, with that that's really my comments and I turn back the floor, I know Brian Belt at some point will also be discussing uh more in support.
Okay. Alright, thank you very much for a great presentation, so um anybody from the board have any questions for Brandon? Anybody? Okay. Alright, so Brandon, you've been with us for a while this afternoon and we had some discussion about the variance test. And the variance test functions on things of, you know, necessity and things unique to the land in question. Um, it's not just making people competitive, but it's fundamental requirements here. So why don't you just have one sign that says, welcome to the Des Moines International Airport and you put it right up by the entrance? Both of your signs are already on the property, it doesn't appear that either of the signs would help people with directional things to know this is where the airport is, this is my turn. Uh, this is the intersection I need, how 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 come you don't have just one nice big sign up by the entrance?
I I think that that's a great question, I think some of this, when we look at signing like this, it isn't just having a sign for what you would see at a retailer when you drive by where some of them are similar and we're in a competition of what's bigger. Some of it's trying to make that wall do more and have a feel and a sense of place that's unique as you go southbound. And yeah, we can have, we could have put up just a concrete wall that would have not been attractive at all, there's a quarry wall but having quarry and three pieces of under- undulating quarry block wall is really enhanced by having something with the visual to break it up a bit and again, it it it's all about making it be a place that's that's lower, it's not gonna be unattractive to people on the other side of the roadway. It, it's really place making um all part of that competitiveness.
Sure, yeah, and and Brandon, I I I totally get where you're coming from, I'm an urban planner by degree, that degree was from the College of Design at Iowa State University, I I get what you're doing here. But those aren't the eyes I have to look at here as a member of the zoning board of adjustment. So so that's why I was curious, you know, you are allowed the one sign uh but your variance is asking for a second one. Um, and so I appreciate your kind of your reasoning, your argument, what what your intention is. Alright, anybody else have any other questions for Brandon? Okay, alright, well, let's go ahead and move on and see, so we'll check back with you in a few minutes, Brandon. Um, do we have anybody else who wishes to speak in support of the applicant's request for the variance? Looks like Brian Belt has his hand up, so we'll recognize him and just need you to restate your name, Brian, and your address.
Yeah, Brian Belt, Director of Engineering and Planning, uh fifty eight hundred Flewer Drive here at the Des Moines International Airport. Um, I'm really just gonna reinforce, I guess the goals of what we're trying to accomplish here is is overall uh what we call in the East Quadrant Development. Um, we are working towards the future terminal. Um, we are installing new roadways to both serve the current terminal as well as the future when it does come into place. Um, we are a destination. We are not the big box stores that are trying to grab that passenger off Flewer to come in and buy a Coke, so um, we want you to remember your first opinion of Des Moines when you rolled in or when you're leaving, to leave a long lasting impression, so uh first and foremost. I also would like to definitely um define the definition of our quarry block wall, so city engineering made us provide structural calculations, they considered it a one unit piece wall which we did provide the structural calculations. And then the city engineering made us pull a building permit, um they considered a unit, so uh to me it would be define a wall, so I do believe that the uh variance would not be requested or would not be required um in that the sign will be in front of a wall as defined um uh through the city, so again, I just want to reinforce, um you know, we're we're not competing with the BP's across the street from Des Moines. Um, I would like to find other industries in a P two district in Des Moines that have a mile of frontage. Um, the airport is unique. We compete differently with other commercial industries within a P two. Um, we're actually finding that uh in the new zoning ordinances, um working with Frank Dunn and Jillian Summer. A lot of the new zoning um are detrimental to the airport. So we're having to ask for a lot of variances, they understand that and we'll be working through those down the road, but uh again, I just want to reinforce that we're a destination. Um, we are competing with the other airports within the state as well as the region. Um, and that can be detrimental if we lose leak, we call it leakage of passengers to those airports, um which would be definitely uh hurt hurt the revenue um for the current terminal as well as the funds that we're trying to uh develop and save for the future, so. Be more than willing to ask, answer any questions that the uh board uh would have.
Okay, alright, any questions for Brian? Going once, going twice, okay, alright, thank you, Brian. Uh, do we have anybody else who wishes to speak in support of the applicant's request? Looks like Mr. Scott would like to speak, so we'll go ahead and recognize him. Go ahead, sir. And we'll need, we'll need you to, um, there you go, you're unmuted, go ahead.
I wasn't planning on uh speaking against, speaking for this.
Well, you raised your hand a little too early, Mr. Scott.
No, no, I want to speak, I want to speak for it because after what I've heard, after what I've heard. Uh, I I am definitely in favor of it. Uh, as a business owner that lives and breathes right across the street at the airport Holiday Inn. When they went through the presentation, it was like a breath of fresh air uh to finally see someone that has the imagination to make a difference for the the airport and as well as the businesses that surround the airport and in some fashion live off of the airport. Um, and I would just encourage the board, which, I mean, your name is Board of Adjustments, which which is to me gives you the authority uh to make exceptions, sensible exceptions to current rules. So I would, I would uh just ask that they take seriously their role in this and not be afraid to have a little imagination, it would make a big difference for the airport and our city as a whole. That's really all I wanted to say.
Okay, alright, well, thank you, Mr. Scott, I'm glad you weighed in.
Thank you.
Anybody else to speak in support of the applicant's request? Alright, I don't see another hands up, um anybody to speak in opposition to the applicant's request? Okay, anybody speaking neutrality? Seeing none, uh zoning uh enforcement officer, Sue Ann, you have any comments?
I have no comments on this.
Okay, um, any further questions we have for city staff?
Yes.
Go ahead, Justin.
Thank you, um, and I don't know who who to direct this to, but I'm just trying to figure out, it sounds like uh what the applicant is saying is that one of them could be construed as w- wall sign um under the definition and uh and so it is, can the city give a little clarification as as to what that, I mean, it sounds like they're seeing the city engineering considered a as a wall too when they were doing permitting, so.
Now, unfortunately, the sections of city code that he cited are in chapter twenty six which the board doesn't have jurisdiction over, so um Sue can probably explain it better than me, but chapter twenty six deals more with signage and signage permits rather than signage allowances. But in the signage table and regulations containing one thirty four.
I bet that surprises the airport people.
Yeah.
Alright, Larry, you are through with 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 your comments, I can't have you making comments off the record there.
The chapter one thirty four, the zoning ordinance is pretty clear that the wall mounted signs have to be on a frontage wall of a building.
Okay, alright, uh Bert, while Justin did ask you that question, I I do want to come back to the appeals themselves. There are two appeals here, the first one is a zoning variance of one freestanding sign over the maximum one freestanding sign, so they want to have two freestanding signs, correct?
Yeah.
And then with those two is the net total that they would need a variance of a hundred and six square feet over their maximum of seventy five.
Exactly.
Which which would allow, they're 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 basing that variance, we need another hundred and six which adds up to our two signs as presented.
Yeah.
Um, if if we only had one sign being presented. Um, if, if we only had one sign being presented, would either one of those independently not need any variances on square footage?
The um, entry sign that was under seventy five square feet, uh, the one that was
There we go. Okay.
Six feet tall by eight point five feet wide, so fifty one square feet. That would be allowed by right.
Yeah.
However, if they were only proposing the second sign, that's a hundred and thirty square feet. Uh, the, they would be allowed the one sign, except the a hundred and thirty square feet would require a variance of fifty five square feet over the allowed seventy five. So the maximum exception that could be granted for the area, if they were having one sign would be a hundred and twelve point five square feet.
Right. Okay. I've, I've got you. So, so if they wanted to just um, you, you know, do Sophie's Choice here and pick one. Um, the bigger sign would still require a variance anyway because it would still be too large. It's well above the exception level.
Yeah, unless they reduced it by um, seventeen point five square feet down to a hundred and twelve point five, then it could be allowed as an exception.
Okay. Um, and this is a question for staff and Judy for you as well. Um, depending on what the board chooses, if, if we said, hey, look, we can't grant a variance for two signs. But if we granted a variance to allow you, well, we wouldn't need to grant a variance to allow the one. But could they come back next month with a quote redesign of a single sign? Because um, if they, if they had to stay with one sign only, if we denied all this, could they come back and say, all right, fine, we'll just do one sign, but we'd still like to have it a little larger at an exception or variance level? Do we have to decide that today? Or, or would, would that be considered a new application if they came back?
If, if the board was inclined to grant the one sign having a maximum area of one hundred and twelve point five square feet, that could be granted today because that's a reduction from what was on the public notices that were sent out.
Got it. But, but otherwise it'd have to be renoticed if they say, no, that's not going to be enough, but they would be allowed to apply because now conditions have changed. Is that correct?
I guess I'm not following.
Well, what, what, what I'm getting at is, is, is that we just say, you, you can have one sign and we're granted at the exception level. If that's our ruling and they're like, we don't like that, can they come back next month and then ask for another variant? Because they may think, well, we just need to redesign this whole thing.
Okay. No, I am following. So.
Yeah.
If you would just grant the exception level, you would also be denying the variance as requested, which means they could not reapply.
Got it. Okay. Okay. All right. Okay. All right. Anybody else with questions for Bert? Okay. All right. Um, since we had a little back and forth there, I will give the uh, Des Moines Airport Authority a little allowance here. Do you guys have anything you want to add? You've got, I'll give you up to three minutes here for your own closing rebuttal. And, and you're welcome to share the time between the two of you if you want.
Yeah, this is Brian at the Des Moines Airport. Um, you, you know, I was kind of following your last question there. Um, we definitely would want the monument sign out there along the floor in between our engine exit lanes. Um, we have to let the people know when, where they're arriving to. Uh, the other sign uh, that would be mounted to the wall along Duck Pond. Uh, it's more visible if you're heading uh, southbound on floor. Um, you can't see it nearly as well if you are northbound on floor. So and it's, and it's almost too late. It's too far in, you know, I think Brandon indicated is like two hundred and fifty feet. So you know, one of the goals here at the airport is we try to reduce the amount of stress. It seems like, you know, traveling, flying stresses people. Um, so we definitely want to make sure they know where they're at when they first pull onto the campus. Um, we try to do everything to make uh, make them feel comfortable, you know, both as they fly away from Des Moines or when they're coming in. So.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Okay. We'll go ahead and close the public portion then and go to board deliberation. So board members, any initial thoughts or ideas here?
Hey Mel, this is Dave.
Yep.
I, I've flown three times last four weeks, twice in the airports I would compare to Des Moines. One Pensacola, the other one, Greenville-Spartanburg. And there's a great sense of arrival when you get to both of those airports. And I never really thought about it in Des Moines because most time when I go, it's dark in the morning because I leave on the six thirty flights. I have to be there at five. But this is a destination in our community and there's a huge um, project coming forth where they want to expand this airport. So I think these signs there, I would consider more interior for the most part, especially the one that's on the wall. And it gives you, I think, a sense of arrival. It's, it's classy looking. Um, you know, we're trying to attract travelers. We're trying to attract airlines. We're trying to attract businesses to our community. Um, there's properties around it that support the airport, support visitors, the hotels, the restaurants, everything else. So I think we're making this way too hard and I think we're being extremely punitive to these guys when it comes to this requirement based on just this complex and what we're trying to accomplish here. So I'm going to be inclined to support what they're asking for. Um, this, this is a huge investment that we all benefit from. And for us, going to kind of control this based on ordinances and signs, I think is, we've got better things to spend our time on and we don't need to make it this hard on the business community. Really? That's, those are just my thoughts initially.
Okay. All righty. Anybody else?
I, I tend, this, Mr. Chair, this is Cindy. I tend to agree with everything Dave said. I, I think I look at these more, more as artwork or art pieces. There, it's really, they're really trying to make it way more beautiful. Right now it's, it's unappealing. It's unattractive. There's no wows when you go to our airport. I think they really need to enhance it and that art piece is going to make quite a difference too.
Hmm. Hmm. Yep. Other thoughts? Um.
This is, this is Nathan.
Yep.
Um, so, I mean, my own feelings about this is it makes imminent sense and I remain uh, much more liberal on sign regulation than what's contained in code. Um, and apparently what the city council considers appropriate. Um, uh, but that said, you know, they're the ones passing the laws and they're the ones who are elected by our community to do so. And it sucks in my mind to apply it in this way, but they haven't, they haven't met the variance test. It would be great. Oh. This, um, but, you know, the city council passes a code. They put this in the district they did. Now, the, the question about the wall signage in particular, I'm not completely, I, I, I think I was following what Bert was arguing. Um, it does seem to me a little um, unfair that the city would define something as a wall for purposes of one part of the code, essentially to make them do more work and then not define it as a wall for other, for another part of the code, which would allow them to, to, to not do what they want to do essentially. I guess that is giving me a little bit of, of pause, but I don't, I haven't heard any argument that they actually meet the variance test.
Hmm.
I will say, just generally speaking, you know, it, I think the, the vision they've, they put forth is great. Um, and I'm sure someone could come up with, I mean, with a, um, if not equally great, something very close to great by adhering to, you know, the, the rules and regulations the city council has passed, um, including making it a, you know, an artistic destination style, attractive welcome to.
Hmm.
Yeah. I certainly would be in favor of the kind of exception level request. I am interested in hearing what other people have to think about the, the wall definition.
Well. Other thoughts? Um, I'm just going to throw in here and I know you guys get sick of it when, when I do this, but again, as a South Sider, I've gone by this airport for fifty years, sometimes every day. Um, I, I probably, I may not know it as well as the employees of the Des Moines Airport Authority. I probably know it as well as anybody else here who's been talking today. Um, including that whole strip on Fluor Drive. And I certainly feel for the airport board. Yes, I, I want the Des Moines Airport to compete. I want it to be attractive and welcoming. And you know what? Could it be better? Yeah. Is it terrible? No. Um, I fly around the country and some of our largest airports have some of the worst entrances. Um, but I'm always about getting things to look better and making a better impression and that, this board of adjustment working within our purview has tried to do that for decades. Uh, we've had lots of issues on Fluor Drive uh, from downtown all the way out to the southern city limit. Um, we, as Nathan referenced, we do have to look within, you know, what's our purview in the law? Uh, what was passed by the elected officials? What are the limitations we have here? Um, so they're allowed one freestanding monument signs. Well, on a place that's acres and acres and acres and uh, as I think was mentioned by Brian, more than a mile of frontage, hell, it's more than that. Um, I could understand at each uh, major entrance to have a monument sign. I'd have no problem with that. But we've got a slippery slope here. We're turning signage into art and we're turning placemaking and and the signs are becoming the architecture and there's a delicate balance between all that. But in order to meet the intent of the zoning ordinance, I, I think that you could probably go back to the drawing board and come up with a good sized sign that would be a single monument sign, probably with an exception level. Um, that sends the message you want and none of that would impact your landscaping, your lighting, uh, the artistic versions of that or having some general sculptures. No, but that is not what we regulate here. I, I get what you're after. I think Brian even referenced, well, uh, you really have to look for it for the big long sign. Um, it's on the backside of the pond. It's hundreds of feet from the road. Um, so I don't really see that we're meeting the variance test on that. Um, I would be more than happy to allow an exception level if we um, are back to having the allowed one freestanding monument sign. Um, so I guess that's what I'd throw at, at, at my colleagues here. I don't know if I'd call it a meat in the middle. Um, but the rules are the rules. We had this with the Hy-Vee Hall. When that was built, Polk County wanted us to have a video board there. That, that, that would play outside commercials for what's going to happen at Hy-Vee Hall in Wells Fargo Arena. And they said, we're special, we're big, we're regional, we have to compete. And we said, no. We, we, we didn't want to see the proliferation of signage, even if yes, you're special and this is regional and gosh, you're a form of government. But the way the zoning ordinance works, the same rules apply to everybody. So that's kind of what I would throw out.
Chair, can I uh?
Yeah, jump in.
Thank you. Um, I guess my issue is not very, I think my issue still is this, this issue of the wall and the structure. It's a definition issue. So I'd like some guidance, I guess, from legal as, I mean, and looking at the two, I don't, I wouldn't consider that other thing a, the monument sign. I would consider it a wall structure. I mean, if it, like Nathan pointed out, I mean, you can't be sort of picking from one, one part of the code and not the other. I mean, I think if they were held to a certain standard to get permitting, uh, I think we should be able to use that definition here. So I don't know, kind of wait a little bit on, on. It seems like a definition issue versus a variance issue.
Okay. Nathan, this is Judy Parks Cruz. Um, thank you for um, asking that question. It is a fair question. But what I will tell you, um, zoning has, the zoning code and the design code have their own um, separate sections of definitions. Um, and in, like criminal law, um, those are to be strictly construed. A court would hold us to the definition of how the zoning code defined a wall sign or sign in, in the more generic sense. Um, and would not go to another part of the code unless we did not have those definitions. So although it seems um, unfair, I guess is the way I'll characterize it to look to one section of the code and be able to say this fits under that definition in, you know, a different chapter, we are held to the zoning definitions when we have taken the um, steps to put them out specifically.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Um, so since we are in board deliberation, we can't take any other testimony here at this time. Um, board members, any other thoughts here? Anybody want to make a motion for approval or denial? There are seven of us. You're all still here, right? All right, team. Unless I've been cut off here, I'm not hearing from anybody and I talk a lot the way it is. So I need your help here.
Yeah, Chair, this is Justin Gross. I mean, I, this is a difficult one, but we have to be within the confines of our, our code and our rules and responsibilities. And so I, I'm going to move staff recommendation to deny um, the variances based on not meeting the variance test, the hardship test.
Justin, uh, this is Nathan. Would you allow a, a friendly second that would allow uh, building their one side, uh, one sign allotment up to the exception level?
Yes, Nathan.
A second with that.
Okay. All right. So we've got a, a motion by Justin, second by Nathan to deny the variance, but to grant an exception level uh, for a single monument sign. Um, okay. So all those in favor of the proposal as presented, you'll say aye, oppose nay, and we'll have um, Tyler take role.
All right. Nathan Blake?
Aye. Yay.
Lynn Carlson?
Aye.
Dave Gare?
No.
Justin Gross?
Aye.
Marlese Jones?
Aye.
Cindy Smith?
No.
And Mel Pins?
Aye.
Motion carries five, two.
Okay. All right. So that concludes item, item number
Eight.
Eight. Thank you. Again, we've got fluor all over the place here. Okay. So item number nine is a temporary use request at sixty one eleven Fluor Drive.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Bert Gross, planning staff for the city of Des Moines. Uh, the request is for a temporary use approval, which would allow for use of the premises for up to two trade shows or per, or conventions per calendar year for the next five years. And these would be very similar in, to the events that were allowed in accordance with the special permits that were granted for five year periods in two thousand and eleven and in two thousand and sixteen. So the difference being our uh, new zoning ordinance that took effect in twenty nineteen calls these temporary uses. Um, which allows for them to be approved in accordance with the um, procedures applicable for conditional uses. Um, so we're now calling them temporary uses instead of special permits. The subject property is the um, Holiday Inn at, on Fluor Drive at the airport. Uh, they are using the parking areas for trade shows up to two times per year. Uh, here are some photos. Uh, this is taken of the northwest corner of the site from Fluor Drive. Um, this is looking north. from, I believe, Peyton. I'm sorry, looking south from Peyton. And this is the south side of the airport, or south side of the hotel. Here's the letter that the applicant had submitted with their application. Again, it indicates they've been holding these events for the past fifteen years. Here's the sketch that they submitted that shows where the activities are taking place. Again, Fluor Drive's to your left, Peyton to the north. And these are some photos that they've taken from past events where they've put up the fencing that was required. We included the special permit from two thousand and sixteen in, just so you can see the conditions that were applied at that time. And again, the conditions that staff's recommending at this time match these conditions that you're looking at right now. And then also, number two is important. It limits the events to three consecutive days and should not operate earlier than eight AM or after six PM. And it also gives them one day before that three-day event and one day after the three-day event for setup and teardown. And then it also requires them to hire the off-duty police officer for the hours that the events are being held. And for the sake of time, I won't read through these, but they are conditions that the Board had worked out with the applicant on previous visits to the Board. Like I mentioned, the temporary use can be approved by the Board in accordance with the conditional use procedures. And our staff recommendation is for approval subjects to those same nine conditions that were applied back in two thousand and sixteen. Here's the consent map. We have two cards in support, and then one card that, with an email or a letter, that's kind of on the fence. First card was from the applicant, who owns this property right here. Then another property owner on Peyton, support. And then we have the card here from Connie Fisher. I'll show you her email here next.
Oh. Bert, that's a real tough one to read.
I believe she'll...
You paraphrase it, or?
I guess she's not no longer on the meeting, but this next email here is easier for her to read, or easier for... So I guess that really concludes my presentation. While you're reading this, did anybody have any questions for me?
No. To the best of your knowledge, has zoning enforcement received any complaints about the operation? If you, you may have covered that, but...
Sue Ann receives, I believe she said, one or two complaints every year from maybe the same person.
Okay. And they're saying, "What, streets are congested, or they leave litter in my yard," or what, what kind of complaints are they?
I believe traffic and parking, but I would defer to Sue Ann.
And when, when we have Sue Ann present or give her the opportunity, she can cover that then.
Yeah.
All right. Okay. Any questions for Bert? All right, doesn't look like we have any. So we'll turn this over to the applicant. You've got up to ten minutes to present. We just need your name and address, and I'm guessing Larry's gonna lead us off.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, hi Larry.
How are you doing? My name is Larry Scott. I'm representing the Airport Holiday Inn, six-one-one-one Fluor Drive. We sent that letter in. I think it's pretty self-explanatory. This particular group is, uh, it's very important to us, especially this year. We're trying to get back on our financial feet. But they've been coming to us for the last thirty years, and we're asking for a renewal of our last permit request, which was, he said, was issued five years ago, and again, five years before that. They do require several things, which we have absolutely no problem with. You mentioned Connie Fisher was, was on the fence. I was with Connie Fisher. I wish she was on the line, but she couldn't be. I was with her just a couple hours ago when she was against the jet parking deal. And she has no problems with this particular function for our property, as long as these nine or twelve accommodations and requirements by the city are met. And we have every intention to do that. And I think over the last ten years, ever since we put up the fence, ever since we had one police officer, which takes one, all the requirements, one portable toilet, no amplified sound, you know, eight to six, two days, one day setup, one day teardown, once a year. She has no problems with that. You could verify that with her, but I don't think we had anyone that that was against it. We did have the Neighborhood Party slash meeting, and I think, I think the city has copies of all of those comments that were in favor of us being able to do that again. So if you have any questions, it would be the same as the last ten or fifteen years. And I'd be happy to answer your questions.
Okay. Hey, hey Larry, just, just for a review, some of our members are newer on the Board. Some of us have been here a while. But is this, is this related to your Petroliana, the collecting of, you know, gas pumps and that kind of stuff? Is that the event you're talking about?
Yes. It is a, it's a national event that started in Des Moines here, probably thirty-five years ago. And it's, it's moved to our property, and it's, it's been different sizes. It probably peaked about five years ago, but it is the, it's really the collectors, they call it the Iowa Gas Collector Show, but it's people that are interested in, in collecting petroleum products. It could be clothing from, you know, old gas stations. It could, it's pumps, it's gas, paraphernalia, anything related to the petroleum industry, and that is antique. And it is, it's quite the show, and our neighbors enjoy it, and we have people from all over town come to it. It's also inside the building. They take, they fill our hotel, and rooms are overflowing to other properties on floor every year, and they have exhibits in our interior rooms, our meeting rooms also. It's not just, we don't take the entire parking lot, but we take a good portion of it. And I would add that in the, it's not really in the, well, the requirements say that we should make special arrangements for extra parking to get them off the street. We have done that the last couple of years. We've worked with the airport, and they have allowed all the trucks and trailers to be parked no expense at the Red Lot, which is just south of us, off of Leland, because they're not using that, and they don't see us using that. They don't see them using that in the near future. So we are, we can use that lot. It's eight hundred parking spots. We probably won't use a hundred of them, but it does give people that want to come a place to park, to walk the parking lot inside, and works out very well.
Yeah. So, so Larry, this is not, this is not a Woodstock event or anything like that.
No, these guys are my, these guys are my age. There's no Woodstock event. No, that's for sure. There's no, there's no sound. It's, uh, they don't, they don't eat out there. It's, if they want to eat something, they come into our, inside to our restaurant. But it's, it's really a two-day show. By Friday morning, most of them are gone. It's really a Wednesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and they have an auction on Friday, which is a worldwide online auction.
Right.
So it's a, it's a great piece of business for the South Side.
Yep. Yeah, I've, I've come to your event a couple times, and it's, it's great fun to buy, sell, or just to look. But only group that I can think of that, that would be kindler and gentler than, than your folks would be postage stamp collectors.
Yes. Maybe, yeah. Yeah, you're right. Maybe quilt collectors or someone like that.
Right, yeah.
It's not, it's not a wild bunch.
No, no, definitely not. All right, thank you. Any other questions? Anybody's got for Larry? Okay, all right. Well, Larry, well, thank you for your comments and your presentation. We'll check back with you in a few minutes. Do we have anybody that wants to speak in support of the applicant's request? So if you want to speak in support, raise your hand, and we'll recognize you. We have, I think, Mr. Mitch Harris would like to speak. Be glad to hear from him. Go ahead, Mitch.
Hey, Mel. This is Mitch Harris, Vice President, Watrous South Neighborhood Association. I did send an email to Bert because I wasn't sure I was gonna be able to be on the call, but we are in support of this project.
Yeah, that's, that's great to hear, Mitch. I, I know you have a busy career day as well as your neighborhood service, so thanks for sticking around and hopping in on this. Have, have you had any complaints that have come to your Neighborhood Association about this event at any time?
No, we have not.
Okay, all right, good to know. Okay, um, anybody else that wants to speak in support of the applicant's request? Just hit star nine on your phone to be recognized or raise hand icon. All right, don't see any? Anybody in opposition or even in neutrality? Okay, don't see any there. Sue Ann Donovan, do you have anything you'd like to add from the zoning enforcement officer's perspective?
Chair members of the Board, I don't have much. Occasionally, I do get some complaints about parking in the, in the area and complaints about staff from the hotel using the street as parking, but it, it's about a couple times a year, and really nothing we can, nothing we can do anything about, so.
Right. And Sue Ann, by, I don't know, parking ordinance, if it's illegal parking space on a city street, and as long as the car isn't there for more than twenty-four hours and it's mobile, there's no limit on who can or can't park on the street, is there?
No, there is not.
Okay. All right, gotcha. Okay, thank you very much. Board members, any further questions for Sue Ann or staff? All right, seeing none. Larry, I think you've covered the issues here, so I think we're just gonna go ahead and go to Board deliberation. Board members, what do you think? I'm, I'm gonna go ahead. I'm, I'm up for conversation, but I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to approve the, as we're now calling it, the requested temporary use for the next five-year period as presented. I've been to this event. I think Larry does his best job. It's not just good for him. It's good for that area. It's good for our city. And I think he tries to be the best neighbor he is. So for those in the area, I always say that it's a lot easier to have bad neighbors than it is good ones, and I think he's trying his best. So I'm making a motion to grant that, and I got a second from who?
Justin. I'll second that.
All right. So a motion by Pins and second by Gross. So all those in favor of granting the requested temporary use, say aye, opposed would be nay. Tyler will take role.
Lynn Carlson?
Aye.
Dave Gare?
Aye.
Justin Gross?
Aye.
Marleth Jones?
Aye.
Cindy Smith?
Aye.
Nathan Blake?
Aye.
And Mel Pins?
Aye.
Motion carries seven, zero.
And, and Larry, when is your next scheduled petroleum event?
Uh, it is, can you hear me?
Yeah.
It is gonna be the first week of August.
Okay, all right.
Wednesday, Thursday of August.
I encourage everybody to go down and, and, and check it out. It's a fun thing to see.
I appreciate your votes. I appreciate it very much.
You bet. Have a good evening.
You too. Thank you.
Okay, that'll move us on to item ten, a zoning variance request at thirty-seven twenty-seven Southeast Fourteenth Street.
Sure. Mr. Chair members of the Board, Bert Gross, planner for the City of Des Moines. The appeal is for a variance of the provision that limits any window sign to covering no more than twenty-five percent of any window. And one difference between the retired zoning ordinance and the current zoning ordinance is that we no longer care if the window signs are affixed to the inside of the window or the outside. We only care what percentage of the window is actually covered by that window sign. The code allows no more than twenty-five percent of any window to be covered by a sign. And as you'll see, they've covered a hundred percent of seven windows. So the subject property is a recently constructed strip commercial center on the southeast Fourteenth Street commercial corridor. It's kind of at the crest of a hill just to the south of Dunkin' Donuts. It's a tire shop here, and then just north of the QuickTrip gas station. So here's the site plan. It's a four-tenant base strip center. The Little Caesar's Pizza is in the northernmost tenant bay. Application. So here was the building elevations that were approved by the city. And the window signs are within these windows here at the corner. So in these photos, you can start to see how the signs covered a hundred percent of these seven windows here. That's the better picture here I should have started with. But again, the zoning code only allows them to cover twenty-five percent of any window, and they've covered a hundred percent. We did not receive any comment cards back on this one. And as I've said a couple times already today, the criteria necessary for granting a variance are very hard to prove. They have to demonstrate that the land in question cannot yield a reasonable return from any use permitted by the regulations in which the land is located without the variance. And they also have to prove that the plight of the owners due to unique circumstances, not of the owner's own making, and which unique circumstances must relate specifically to the land in question and not to the general conditions of the neighborhood. So in this instance, we don't believe that they've satisfied the criteria necessary for granting the variances.
Okay.
Any questions for staff?
Anybody from the Board? Questions? Hey Bert, can, can you show the profile or elevation drawing of what was submitted with the site plan?
Yeah.
I just want to compare again. Okay, all right. So, so that rendering, the only signage on the building or graphics of any type is what you've got right there.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and the facade and placement of the windows was built generally as they designed it, but we've got this addition here of this signage with pizza pizza guy, right?
Right.
Yeah, which is Little Caesar, I'm assuming. Okay, gotcha. Um, when the site plan is submitted or the application comes in, does it note compliance is required for sign ordinance, or does it reference limitations in the sign ordinance?
Yeah, the site plan generally says that any signage needs to be installed in accordance with the sign permit. And that signage has to meet code, but the site plan itself doesn't get into signage sizes.
Okay, but, but one would understand that they would need permission to install signage then. That they need a permit and need to have that approved first.
Right.
Okay, gotcha. All right, anybody else have questions? Okay, all right. Thank you for your presentation, Bert. We'll go ahead and move on to the applicant. The applicant, it's up to ten minutes to present the reasoning for their variance request. And we just need you to start off with your name and address, and you've got the floor for ten minutes. Go ahead. All right, your, your mute went off and then on. So it looks like you're muted now. If you're participating by phone, just hit star six.
There we go.
There you go.
Hi, good afternoon.
Gotcha.
Okay, so Mr. Chair, Board Members. Um, initially, uh, when we submitted the plans to the city, uh, for this structure, we wanted the, um, um, the structure to be to the, uh, most um, east, uh, part of the parcel. Um, however, um, I guess by design, uh, the city wasn't, uh, uh, going for that, so they wanted us to push the building all the way up to the front um, of the parcel towards the west side, making the, um, um, the front, I guess what you would call the front of the center for us would be the inside of the center on the east side where the parking would be. So by that, by the nature of that requirement, and it wasn't an option for us, and that's what the city requested. So, uh, that would make, by the nature of our operation, uh, where we have, where our carryout business only, we have our lobby in front and then the kitchen and our equipment all the way in the back. In this case, what happened was that now the back end of our store is facing the road. Therefore, all our equipment are in the back and, um, but, uh, and, and the only way the feasible layout for our store equipment would, would be to have that walk-in large piece of equipment saying against those windows. So, um, we went through, uh, a number of, um, probably options just to see how we can cover those. Uh, we don't want an eyesore facing the street. We spent, um, almost two million dollars putting the structure up and, uh, we don't want an eyesore in. And just to put smaller, um, window clings or a small banner will not do the job, though still you can see the walls of the walk-in, which is an eyesore. The other option that we, uh, went through was just the black and those windows and that would, that one resolved the issue. It still would be an eyesore. So we went ahead and decided to put some window coverings up, which are done professionally, they're very clean, um, they're colorful, and it wasn't for marketing issues, it was just the, 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 the issue was just the cover that I saw there. So we, we went ahead and did that, but we, we talked to three separate local, uh, business, uh, assigned businesses there. And, um, none of us really told us that we would have to pull a permit for those particular window coverings. So in this case, we're pleading ignorance that we needed a permit for the window coverings. Um, and the first time that we were, um, uh, someone let us know that, we reached out to the, uh, uh, a sign permitting and a planning department, asked them, what do we need to do? I mean, these cost us a, a significant amount of money and to put up, and, uh, what do we need to do? Um, um, just let us know what we need to do and we'll do it. I mean, if we have to take them down, we would, we'll, we'll take them down. Uh, but that'll add another extra cost to us. Um, my humble opinion is, um, it, it just improves the corner instead of just having walk-in walls showing through the glass. Um, that's basically all I have, but I wish, um, that, uh, we were a known net, we were, we would have went through the process. It's not like we went and we defied or we were something malicious there. We just, we didn't know that we, there was a process for window covering. Of course, we know that there's a process for signage, but we didn't consider window coverings as signage.
Sure. Okay. All right, board members, we have questions for Mr. Barry? Mr. Barry, I'm just gonna throw you a brief one because you, you spent a fair amount of time on your reasoning here of you, you said your layout changed and so in essence you'd have some interior equipment jammed up against this window, so you wanted to cover that to make it look nicer. But throughout your site plan process, the entire design of the layout and the architecture of this building, was it not clear, um, so somehow of what the city requirements were? I, I don't understand how they would have approved your site plan. Uh, because what you showed on your site plan is exactly what, what you built. So I'm, I'm having trouble following you there. Can you help me?
Yeah, it, it's not that, well, having the walk-in that we, it's not, it actually, we didn't think that far ahead that we're gonna have, the walk-in's gonna be facing the road now. Before, if the building was pushed to the rear of the, uh, parcel, the, the way the one, the way we wanted it, the back of the store would be to the back of the parcel and showing it's not visible to the roads or anything. But when this happened, um, the back of the store is in the front now, but we didn't think that we would have to, it would be an eyesore such that, so it wasn't part of the, um, architectural plans the, for the layout of the interior of the store, as far as.
Okay. So in other words, you're, you, you made no considerations of how your interior laid out versus to how your exterior laid out, which to me seems rather odd.
No, the, the.
Yeah.
Always known that the, the walk-in would be at the back of the building, okay?
Okay, okay.
Building now is in the front, so now that it hap, the way it is right now, I mean, even if I take those signage down, and I'm willing to do that if I have to, but what, what's gonna be there? It's gonna be a walk-in door, a walk-in wall. And what we're trying to do is have a solution to that eyesore.
Um, okay, all right, I'm, I've got you.
Wasn't planned that we want to put those there. That wasn't part, part of our planning at all.
Right. Now, you, you, you mentioned that, did you ask your sign contractor if this was in compliance with the city's codes?
Honestly, I can't say that we asked them particularly, uh, if it is a requirement to get a permit, but when, when I spoke to them and I told them that's something that I'm considering and I want to install, none of them told us that this is something that you have to get a permit for. So they installed it with, and I, like I said, that's probably ignorance on our part. Maybe we should have.
Yep, and, and while I might not, we, we, we aren't here to necessarily settle disputes between contractors and customers. You, you, you might want to look at any contract. Yeah, if you said you paid for this and your assumption was it was within the requirements, then you might want to look to your contract for that.
No, that's not, that's, that's not an issue here.
Okay, okay.
Better, I, I understand, maybe it's their fault, maybe it's ours. The issue here, still have an eyesore. If we take that down, we still have an eyesore. What do we do with the windows?
Yeah, okay. All right, I got you. All right, anybody else have any questions for Mr. Barry? Okay, all right, seeing none, sir, uh, you can take a break for a minute or two here. Um, we'll see if there's anybody participating in the hearing that would like to make a, uh, comment in support, opposition, or neutrality for the applicant's request. I'm just gonna throw it out here. Um, if so, hit the raise hand icon on Zoom or star nine on your phone. I don't think we've got anybody there going once, going twice. All right, any, um, comments from the zoning enforcement officer?
Sure, members of the board, um, I, I guess I have a couple concerns. I, I think that windows are for transparency purposes a- and part of the design and building code, so I'm not sure that this is in compliance with those requirements by putting a walk-in next to the windows that are needed for transparency. And, and I don't think they meet the variance test. Um, if, I guess I'm kind of questioning why they didn't do the interior layout when they were planning it to, to figure all that out before they did the interior build out, but in any event, i- it doesn't meet the variance test.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Okay, thank you very much. Um, any questions for Sue Ann or city staff from the board?
Yes, Chair, I got a question.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Um, besides the one, and I'm looking at the picture, I'm glad it's still up. Besides the one with the pizza and the hot and ready classic, Mia, could the other ones, other windows with, with a guy, I mean, could that be construed as more like artwork? I mean, if they had all like that, couldn't that be considered more like artwork than, than an, an actual sign?
That's a branding of the company, and so therefore it would be a sign.
Yeah, okay, just asking, thanks.
Yeah, no. Question, um, along those lines a little bit. What if they were all blackout, but they were orange? They were just orange, plain orange?
Well, it still wouldn't meet the transparency requirement and the percentages of transparency.
I mean, they could put shades up. You can put shades up in your windows, right?
Yeah, that would be an option, I would assume.
Yeah. Okay. So Sue, Sue Ann, from a fundamental perspective, for any building facade, it has to have a certain percentage of that, of that profile that is composed of windows, which are generally considered transparent, correct?
And I can answer that, um.
Okay, sure.
So, the site plan was approved under the new zoning ordinance that took effect in December of twenty nineteen. And, uh, it had to meet the chapter one thirty-five design guidelines. It was reviewed under the storefront building type, which requires fifteen percent of the front facade to be, uh, transparent windows.
Got it, okay. Which is not a lot. I, I mean, that's not asking a lot to begin with. Okay, I've got you. All right, anybody else with questions for staff? All right, Mr. Barry, I'm, I'm gonna give you the courtesy. If you want to close this out with any closing comments, you can, um. I'll, I'll give you up to three minutes. Is there anything else you want to add?
Again, yeah, yes, um, I just want to add that the layout of the store, um, with this piece of equipment, I can't put the walk-in in the middle of the store. It just doesn't work. I mean, I've have, I have seventeen different locations and there's thousands of locations across the country where the walk-in is always at the, in one corner of the store, which is in the back. So it's not like I could, I have options where to put that large piece of equipment, the walk-in. Um, again, we didn't, we didn't put those window coverings as a branding, nor did we do it as a, um, marketing ergo that we didn't put any, um, um, dollar signs on there. We just wanted to get rid of an eyesore. That was our reasoning. I understand whatever decision you make, but that was our reasoning.
Okay, all right, yep, all right, I've got it. Great, thank you. Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public portion then and go to board deliberation among the members. Anybody have any thoughts on this?
This is Lynn Carlson. I have thoughts. Um, if we would allow this to go through, um, yeah, there, there's no words, but that's obviously advertising using the colors and the, um, graphics are well-known for Little Caesar's. I mean, you could show me the picture of that guy and I could tell you the name of the shop without the name next to it. Uh, you know, I've never been there. Um, and so I think if we allow, were to allow this, we're opening a slippery slope to letting other people say window coverings are now signs and such. Um, I don't know if, I mean, we have enough of the fifteen percent with just the door front there, if they should just make that red. Um, you know, we have the transparency issue, but I think that's already covered. With that, I do see that they don't want to cover that up. I, um, I mean, that wall could have been bricked for everything we know. And to brick it now would be hard, but I'm in favor of allowing some type of solid covering there, but none of the graphics.
Okay. Okay, all right, well spoken. Thank you, Lynn. Anyone else? Okay, all right, well, I don't want to be the mean guy here, but, but sometimes we can't make everybody happy with these things. The variance test is a difficult one. Um, and I, I remain perplexed how you spend two million dollars to build a building and you, you lay it out on the exterior to meet the city's requirements, but you don't think of your interior layout and/or equipment. And then in order to cover up some equipment, you wind up putting some pretty blatant signage on a building. Um, that's a little tough for me to get around. So, um, again, my side of town, this is a nice improvement to this property. Um, I, I don't think that the signage is gonna help the applicant in, in a great deal, so I don't know. He didn't say that that was one of the reasons, but I think he's gonna have to find a way to deal with it to meet the requirements in the city zoning ordinance. So I'm gonna make a motion to deny the zoning variance here. Would there be a second?
I'll second, Mel.
All right, so motion by pin, second by gear to deny the requested variance. All those in favor will say aye. Opposed to denying the variance would be nay. Tyler will take a roll.
All right, um, Nathan Blake?
Aye.
Lynn Carlson?
Lynn, I missed that. Did you catch that, Tyler?
I did not.
Lynn, we're having problems hearing you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I had something else come in. Amber, I'll call you back. Okay, double tasking here. What was your question?
Okay, we're, we're, we're taking a vote to deny the variance request.
I will deny it.
So that's, is, is, is that a yes for denial?
Yes for denial.
All right, thank you. Uh, Dave Gare?
Yes.
Justin Gross?
Aye.
Marla Jones?
Aye.
Cindy Smith?
Aye.
And Mel Pins?
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
Okay, so that, that concludes our agenda items for, uh, appellate consideration today. Now, we have a fair amount of other business to do. Uh, we'll start with the simple ones. Uh, approval of minutes from March, if you were here at the March meeting, if you had any concerns with how the minutes were presented, any amendments or changes, let us know. If none, would there be a motion for approval?
I'll move approval. This is Nathan.
I'll second Cindy, Cindy second.
Nathan and Cindy, make a motion and all those in favor will say aye with roll call.
Cindy Smith?
Aye.
Marla Jones?
Aye.
Justin Gross?
Aye.
Dave Gare?
Aye.
Nathan Blake?
Aye.
Lynn Carlson?
Aye.
And Mel Pins?
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
Okay, all right. Next item would be an election of officers, and I know that just about all of you um, have told me who, who you'd like to see, so I'd like to hear from everybody on, uh, on your self-nomination.
Yeah, I'm gonna take this. This is Lynn. I, I will not nominate myself because this is my last meeting with the board. I'm moving up to Minnesota this summer. So, um, I've enjoyed this so much, but unfortunately I, I'll have to decline any nomination.
Lynn, okay, forget about nominations. This is your last meeting and you just tell us now.
Well, there was no opportunity to say anything soon. That's the problem.
Yeah, this is what sucks about the COVID stuff. Lynn, I cannot thank you enough for the dedication that you have given this board. You have been on our board, I believe, gosh, twenty, it was before twenty fifteen.
Yes.
So, so you've served five, six years on this board. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve with you. You've given a great amount of dedication. I, I know you've had plenty of irons in the fire professionally, personally. Um, probably some issues, challenges that you had to work on, but you always gave your best to us, so I cannot thank you enough.
I enjoyed this so much. I, I, I was gonna lie and say I was still living here until I commute, but that didn't work.
We will miss you, Lynn.
Thank you.
Yeah, we will, uh, find a way to, to share our heartfelt thanks with you.
I will be around till middle of June, so.
Okay, good to know, good to know. Well, we'll, we'll catch up with you down the line.
Perfect, okay. Now, I nominate Mel.
So we, we, we'd be looking at chair here, of course, and so nominations for chair, we got one. Are there any other nominations? Man, you, you, you guys make this too easy for people, okay? Is, is there? Is, is there a second to nominate, Mel?
I thought I heard a second from somebody.
I thought Dave did.
Yeah, yes.
I'm sorry. I, I, I. Okay. All right, so for the record, is, is that good enough? We got a nomination and a second?
Yep, that works. We just need a vote.
All right, this, this may not pass, so let's take roll call and see.
All right, Nathan Blake?
Aye.
Lynn Carlson?
Aye.
Dave Gare?
Aye.
Justin Gross?
Aye.
Marlis Jones?
Aye.
Cindy Smith?
Aye.
And Mel, Tins?
Um, since I'm not a deciding vote, I'm gonna abstain on this one.
Okay, so that motion carries six zero one. And congratulations to you, Mel.
Yeah, Mel, you, you do a great job. Thank you for everything you do. You guys make it easy. This is a great group to work with and we have one other officer position, which is our vice chair.
I nominate Nathan.
Exactly, I'll second. Nathan, if you're elected, would you serve?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, all right, because.
Hard, it's a hard role, Mel, since you miss about once every three years. The way I've handled it is to make sure that I miss those same months, and so someone like Dave will have to second.
Well, and everybody has been great about assisting with that, so, including Nathan. So, okay, so we got a motion and a second for Nathan for vice chair. We'll take roll call.
Cindy Smith?
Aye.
Marlis Jones?
Aye.
Justin Gross?
Aye.
Dave Gare?
Aye.
Lynn Carlson?
Aye.
Nathan Blake?
I guess I'll abstain as well.
All right, and Mel, Tins?
A resounding yes.
All right, that motion carries six zero one as well.
Okay, all right, so staff, tell us what we need to look at here.
The, the next item for action is review and approval of revisions to the board's rules of procedure. These haven't been amended since two thousand and ten. So we're just making some very minor tweaks just to reflect today's realities and also to reflect the recent restructuring of the community development department. Bylaws made many references to the community development department, which no longer exists, so the references to that have been revised to development services. But as you can see, all of the changes are in either red or blue. And there's no really rhyme or reason to the color. That was just if I had suggested them or Sue Ann in her review. So most of them are just, like I said, purely changing community development department to development services. And just adding little statements here and there to make it a little more clear. Then here in the section that speaks on how notices are sent, the previous or the current version of the minutes, or the minutes of the bylaws reflect the retired zoning code, which was, you know, had the format of like chapter one thirty-four dash sixty-four. So we've now updated these to meet the new code, or to reflect the new code sections. And again, and also where the meetings are held, it had been saying the council chamber at city hall. We're now meeting at the boardroom at the municipal service center. Reflecting, amending it to reflect the current situation, but otherwise, there really aren't any other substantive changes. Did anybody else have any they would like to propose at this time?
No.
If not, it takes the affirmative vote of at least five members to pass any amendment.
Okay.
Nobody has any, somebody can make a motion in the second, then you could vote.
Yep, okay, all right. Let's, let's go back up to the title. Just so we can call it what it is. All right. Okay, well, I'll just go ahead and kick it off. I'm gonna make a motion to approve the proposed amendments to the rules of procedure for the zoning board of adjustment as presented on April twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-one.
This is Marlis, I'll second.
Oh, man, Nathan, the vice chair beat you to the punch. All right, motion by Penn, second by Blake. All those in favor will take roll call.
Nathan Blake?
Aye.
Lynn Carlson?
Aye.
Dave Gare?
Aye.
Justin Gross?
Aye.
Marlis Jones?
Aye.
Cindy Smith?
Aye.
And Mel, Tins?
Aye.
That motion carries seven zero.
All right, so one last thing.
Yeah, we have Amber Lynch with us today. She's the executive director of the relatively new Invest DSM. And she's here to give us an overview of her entity.
Great, welcome, Amber.
Well, thanks, everyone. Happy to be here. A few of you may remember me from my time as a neighborhood planner for the city, which is a role that I was in from two thousand nine until twenty nineteen, when I moved over to get Invest DSM up and running. So I asked Bert if I could come and share a little bit with all of you about what we're doing through that organization. So hang on, let me get the right screen up here. Get things started. I promise I will try and be relatively brief so that you all can get on with your evenings. So Invest DSM is a nonprofit organization. It was created just about two years ago now, summer of twenty nineteen as a partnership between the city of Des Moines and Polk County. And it grew out of the city of Des Moines Neighborhood Revitalization Program, which dates back to the late nineteen eighties. So that was the program that I worked under while I was at the city. And in twenty seventeen, we brought in a consulting team to do an evaluation of that program. And kind of a refresh on how we were approaching work in neighborhoods. And Invest DSM was one of the implementation tools that was created after that evaluation was done. I think the kind of main main message from that evaluation was while we were doing some great planning work, the resources were spread dispersed too widely to really make an impact and move the needle in any given neighborhood. And so one of the tools that we identified that we needed was additional funding that was local and more flexible than federal dollars, which had historically been used for neighborhood revitalization. And then also an entity that could take, take that project management role of orchestrating implementation once plan documents were complete. So that's really what we have structured Invest DSM to do, and a big part of the reason why I wanted to share it with the Board of Adjustment is just to make sure that you're aware of our activities and of what we're trying to accomplish for the city. Because there are projects that inevitably will come across your desk, and so I wanted to make sure that you had awareness of where we're working and what we're trying to accomplish in those places. We are funded entirely right now by the city of Des Moines and Polk County, mainly through local option sales tax dollars. And our budget for the last two years has been five million dollars. This upcoming fiscal year, which starts July first, both funding partners have elected to increase their funding, and so we will have ten million dollars next fiscal year. Get my slides working. So right now, we're working in four different neighborhood areas. We are calling them special investment districts because they don't quite line up with the neighborhood boundaries. The Franklin area, which is number one, is the southern part of the Beavertale neighborhood and the northern part of the Waveland Park neighborhood. The number two area in Drake is about a quarter of the Drake neighborhood, so it's the southeast corner of that. Area three, Columbus Park, just on the south side of downtown, were a little bit smaller than their neighborhood association boundaries. And then the same is true for Oak Park. We're in a smaller subsection of that neighborhood. And we purposefully picked small geographies so that we could concentrate resources in a small enough geography so that the impact started to become visible and would eventually snowball. We also went through a little bit of a different selection process than, than the city has in the past. This was more of a, a staff and council-driven selection process. And it relied on a lot of the data work that we did through the program evaluation with the consulting team. But then also with just what we knew qualitatively about the community. So we were looking for neighborhoods that were a little bit more in the middle of the market, so not the strongest neighborhoods in the city and not the weakest neighborhoods in the city. But ones where we could see kind of a short-term return on investment. And then we were looking for places that already had some existing momentum. So in Oaks Park, in Oak Park's case, that was a really passionate group of residents and business owners, along with the city's investment in Riverview Amphitheater. In Drake, it was, of course, Drake University there as an anchor institution, but then also some of the development interest that's been occurring around the edges of campus. With Franklin, you know, that's a relatively strong and healthy neighborhood to begin with, and so we're really trying to prevent that from going downhill. And then Columbus Park, again, being downtown adjacent and kind of right on the south side of the river there. We wanted to get in front of some of the development pressure that will inevitably occur there and kind of figure out how we shape that. Our main goals, and feel free to just hop in and interrupt me if you have a question. Our, our main goals for the organization, hoping that we move beyond these four pilot areas at some point in time. But it's really to influence the market. One of the things that the consultants pointed out to us as they assessed a variety of data for the entire city was that we have about two-thirds of the city where values have been struggling to keep pace with inflation over about a fifteen-year time period. And so, you know, that causes difficulty for property owners who then are not building equity in their homes. And then also for the city when they're trying to provide services and are not collecting the revenue that they need from the tax base. So we're really trying to over-improve the real estate through financial partnerships with property owners, most of which are, are grant funds. And help them overcome this gap between what it costs to renovate older homes or older commercial buildings and then what it can appraise for in the current market. So that appraisal gap is really what we're focusing our, our funds on directly. And then, of course, we're working on a variety of other things to improve desirability and quality of life. So we have a number of city departments that we're partnering with around infrastructure and other types of amenities. And so with our activities, we're really looking at the, the zoning and building codes to set the minimum standards. And then are encouraging projects that we're putting funding into to exceed those standards. And that might just be an upgrade in materials. It might be making sure there's a high-quality design, particularly if it's the exterior of the building. We're incorporating some energy efficiency things in, in there as well. And then we're learning and adjusting as we go. So I probably could have put this slide earlier, but our role is really to orchestrate that implementation. And so in addition to the direct investments, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a minute, we're also working on other things like how do we coordinate with city departments, as I mentioned, or other nonprofit partners that do work specifically on other components of the neighborhood. So Neighborhood Development Corporation is a great example. They are a nonprofit commercial developer. And so we have been a funding partner with them to get a number of commercial projects done. Particularly in the Oak Park Special Investment District. And then we're partnering with Neighborhood Finance Corporation for loans and new construction of single-family homes. We're partnering with Home Inc. and with Habitat around affordable housing. And so those are just some examples of what we're doing on the, the coordination, collaboration side. Then we also have this role of trying to build capacity and leadership within each of our special investment districts so that residents, business owners, other stakeholders in those places really are owning this and and they're the ones that are driving the change. And then we get to play a little bit of a cheerleader role in trying to broadcast to the broader community, greater Des Moines region, that these neighborhoods are great places to live and should be considered when people are looking to buy a new house. So on the direct investment side of things, we have put together a number of programs over the last eighteen months. And this is just a small sampling. I'll just go through them really quick, high level. Block Challenge Grant is a matching grant focused on exterior improvements to homes, so curb appeal type projects. It's seasonal. It's something we ran last summer. And we match each property owner up to twenty-five hundred dollars. But the catch is that they have to apply with a team of neighbors from the same block. So we're aiming for neighbor connection and block level impact here. And last year, I had hoped, since it was our first year, that we would get fifty participants across our four neighborhoods, and we ended up with two hundred and forty. So we had crazy success with that program, kind of blew all of our expectations away. And it resulted in about one point one million dollars worth of investment back into our housing stock. And for every dollar Invest DSM put into that, property owners put in about a dollar fifty. So we have opened up that program again this year and are actually talking with the city about how we can replicate that outside of our special investment districts. Homeowner renovation then is the next step up, and so this is for individual homeowners who want to do larger-scale renovations to their homes. And I'll get into some examples of that after this. But it, again, it's a cost share, so it's a grant they receive from us anywhere from twenty-five to fifty percent of the project costs. And this is where we're really trying to overcome that appraisal gap as well as just encouraging people to feel confident making that investment. So we've got almost a hundred and sixty participants working their way through that program. And are starting to get some projects completed through that, and it's exciting to see the level of interest. Then we're also working with developers, so we do have probably close to a dozen projects where a developer or investor has purchased a home and is rehabbing it and then will sell it. We are starting to get into new construction as well, so that will be coming later this year. Invest DSM has purchased a number of properties so that we can try and kind of be strategic about what happens with them. Typically, they're ones that are in pretty rough shape, and so they're gonna need substantial renovation work, and we want to make sure that that's getting done right. We're also offering commercial grants. Those are matching grants, again, up to twenty-five thousand dollars. And for anything from facade work to code compliance upgrades. And I'll show you a couple of examples of that here in a minute as well. We are working on a rental rehab program that should be available later this year, so that's still in the development phase. And then there's always a variety of other things going on, on any given day. So the Franklin area, like I said, this is the, the southern part of Beavertale, the northern part of Waveland Park. So Hickman is our northern boundary and then University on the south. Forty-eighth Street on the west over to Beaver Avenue, Forty-first Street on the east. And the map that you see is a, a property condition survey that we did during the planning process. And so properties in yellow are in average shape. Ones and twos, the greens are in good or excellent shape, and then orange and red start to become more problematic. So, you know, the types of issues that we're seeing in this neighborhood that are being corrected with, with some of our funds, deferred maintenance type things, that's true across all four of our special investment districts. In the Franklin area, we're seeing Um, in the Franklin area, we're seeing a fair amount of interest in home additions. Um, again, this is something fairly common across neighborhoods in Des Moines. We have a lot of one bathroom houses. And so uh, we are trying to use our funds to help people add even a, a half bath. Um, uh, we've noticed in the sales data that it makes it more likely to sell to a new owner occupant. And it also um, increases the sale price of the home by somewhere between twenty and thirty thousand dollars, just to have that extra half bath. Um, so that's something that we're working on along with other types of additions. Um, new garages or rebuilding garages. It's interesting in this area, we have a lot of houses that are in great shape and then garages that are detached and falling down in the backyard. So we're getting to correct some of those issues. Um, and then like I said, adding, adding basement or attic living space as well. Um, this is an example of a two story addition that's underway right now in the Franklin area. Um, and this family is really uh, investing in this project so that they can stay in this home for a long time. Uh, Drake, so we are south of university in the Drake neighborhood. We're kind of southeast of campus. Uh, and we go from Thirty Fifth Street on the west to about Twenty Fourth Street or where Drake Park sits on the east. Um, and then two thirty five is our southern boundary in this area. Um, so we have all the same things that we see in Franklin, uh, but we also have some challenges that are unique to Drake amongst our four special investment districts at least. So of course, being um, adjacent to a university and um, with the age of the housing stock, one of the things that we find in Drake is a lot of large old homes that um, after World War Two were converted to multi unit flats. Um, and it has long been the goal of the neighborhood to try and get some of those downsized to just either reduce the number of units or convert those back to this, to single family as they were originally built. Um, so we are able to use our funds to do some of that work. Uh, we're taking some of those on ourselves, um, and then some we're tackling with other developers. Uh, we're also helping people with floor plan changes a lot in this area. Um, you know, opening up layouts, uh, again, kind of adding square footage. Um, we're putting funds into home safety things like radon systems, uh, front porch restoration. Um, in particular in this neighborhood, there's a lot of front porches that have been enclosed over the years and trying to encourage people to open them back up in a way that's appropriate to the historic nature of the architecture. Um, and then this is where our rental rehab program uh, will really come in as well is in, in the Drake neighborhood. Um, so this is just an example of a, a homeowner project where they added a back deck. They also put in a radon system, um, just one of our, our recent projects. Um, okay, so Oak Park Highland Park, we're just on the edge of Highland Park. Um, and their neighborhood associations do a lot of things together. They're kind of acting as one right now. So that's why there's the reference to both neighborhoods. We have Seneca Avenue on the north. Um, we come down then to McHenry Park. Um, which then feeds south into where the River View Park is at. Um, Twelfth Street on the west, Sixth Avenue on the east. Um, and again, lots of deferred maintenance issues here. Um, a lot of two bedroom, one bath houses, and so we are looking for ways to demonstrate um, how additions can be put onto those homes. Um, certainly wanting to keep some of that two bed, one bath inventory, but then also offering people the option to add on if they so desire. Um, and as you can see, conditions here are a little bit rougher than the previous two. Um, or a little bit more average perhaps. Uh, one of the things that we are working with is trying to replace kind of old chain link fencing with something a little bit um, uh, higher quality, um, a wooden privacy fence in the backyard. And we're trying to keep fencing out of the front yard as much as possible, um, just for issues of perception and safety and um, uh, kind of the desirability of the neighborhood. Uh, we're correcting a lot of things with retaining walls too. That's an example of an outdoor project. Um, and then Oak Park Highland Park, we've had a ton of momentum in the business district over the past year. Um, and there we've done everything from just the facade work um, on a commercial building and adding some public art to code compliance upgrades like um, uh, bringing the electrical and plumbing up to date, adding ADA accessible restrooms, um, putting in grease interceptors, uh, things like that that have held these older buildings back from continuing to be leased by good tenants and um, and getting them ready for those new tenants to move in. Uh, we've also done some work on exterior site improvements. So one example of that is uh, what was the Highland Park hardware store? Uh, when Bill Wheeler decided to retire last year, um, he uh, shrunk his business to be just window and screen repair and wanted to put new awnings on the building. Um, he's maintained the building in excellent condition over the years. Uh, but he wanted to redo the signage and awnings, so we shared the cost of that with him. Um, and then as the Slowdown Coffee Shop moved in to the other space, um, we helped them with some of the plumbing and electrical upgrades that, that needed to happen um, to, to let that open. And now they're doing very well. I was just up there earlier this afternoon. Uh, we also did, you can see a little bit in this picture right here, we um, had funding in reopening the Highland Park Bakery. That was a partnership we had with Neighborhood Development Corporation. Um, and that, that business has also been doing well also, despite the pandemic. Uh, then we had this building, which is a little further north on Sixth Avenue, and so you can see the ugly facade that was um, on this building. And now the green side is the Des Moines Mercantile, if anybody's familiar with that store. Um, and then uh, Dan Koenig, who owns Ichibike in the East Village, he actually owns the whole building. Um, and so this was another grant funded project between us and NDC to get that facade work done for them. We also did a mural on the north side of the building here. Um, so those are some examples of the work in Oak Park and then Columbus Park. Uh, more of the same and also some differences in this area. So this is the neighborhood that's just to the south of downtown. Um, it's uh, you can see in terms of its value growth over the time period we looked at. Uh, most property owners averaged uh, an increase of about four hundred dollars on their property value over the eight years that we looked at. Um, so that's, that's a, a problem and something that we're working to correct. Part of the issue is that a lot of the housing stock was built late eighteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds. It was working class housing to begin with and not terribly well built at the time. Um, and so now we're seeing all kinds of issues with foundations and termite damage and um, just small, small homes that aren't terribly attractive in today's marketplace. Um, so in addition to some of the rehab and, and homeowner uh, partnerships that are similar to our other districts, we're also looking at a fair amount of redevelopment in this neighborhood. Um, so this is just an example of one of the homeowner projects. Again, it could be anything from replacing gutters and, and rot uh, on the exterior uh, to adding new siding, replacing the siding, repainting the siding. Um, so one of the things that this neighborhood plan called for was a, a fair amount of redevelopment. Um, and so the, the orange area on the map here um, is kind of between where Graziano Brothers and May and Sons is located. Calling for uh, pulling in some mixed use or um, more retail commercial uh, in this area to try and make it feel a little bit more like an actual commercial district. Um, with some higher density stuff around it. And then transitioning from that into the blue area, which butts up against the river on the north. Um, with a mix of single family rehab, single family new construction and then uh, trying to bring some, some new housing products into the area like townhomes, row homes, that kind of small scale, missing middle uh, multifamily. Um, so we are working on uh, purchasing, acquiring some lots in in the blue area in particular to try and get them ready for redevelopment. Uh, one of the things about this neighborhood is it's platted primarily as forty foot lots. Um, and some of those lots have been absorbed as side yards uh, by owners over the years. Um, and so we just purchased one recently that has a one hundred and twenty foot frontage. Um, and so we'll take the existing house down. It has some structural issues. Um, and then we'll be able to split that into three lots for new single family construction. Um, and here's just a couple of examples of the types of house plans that we're looking at. So things that are complimentary to the existing neighborhood in terms of the roof line and, and um, porches. But uh, are at least three bedrooms, two or two and a half baths, if not four bedrooms, two baths. Um, which is something that we don't have um, enough of in Des Moines, uh, and then more modern layouts. So with that, um, we've got about a ten year implementation timeframe in each of these neighborhoods. So our commitment is to be in them um, for ten years unless we feel like they're ready for us to move on sooner. Uh, there is a plan document for each of them that is available on the city's website. It's kind of a long file path, but uh, I'm sure Bert can get you connected to it, um, if you want to peruse them. Um, and we hope that we'll be able to expand beyond these four at some point. Um, but we wanted to get the organization established first and up and running. Um, and I think like I said at the beginning, I just wanted to make sure that um, this board was aware of it because I know that you see projects all of the time that are asking for exceptions to the rules. And so I wanted you to have this in mind as you're considering those requests. Questions?
Yeah, anybody got questions for Amber?
Lynn Carls, I have a question. As a former real estate agent, yes. Are you telling this to the Realtors? Because this is like so exciting. I live in Highland Park. I've seen a lot of the changes. I just love this and I'm so sorry, I'm living the state, but.
Me too. It sounds like you would be a great ally. Um, yes, we are starting to. So last year was our first year of rolling out programs and we were really focused on trying to do that well. Um, and so this year we are starting to uh, reach out a little bit more broadly to help that real estate audience understand what we're doing, where we're doing it and how their clients might be able to take advantage of programs.
Wonderful, because I know enough of them didn't know about neighborhood finance until, you know, I got involved, so.
Right.
I, I'm so excited about this. This is wonderful.
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions for Amber?
So with your budget doubling, are you just hoping to serve more or is it going to, the focus going to change to a degree?
That's a great question and one that we're working through with our board right now. Um, I do think it allows us to accelerate the work that we're doing in these areas to some extent. Um, it gives us a little bit more capital that we can use to acquire and redevelop properties ourselves because that ties up our, our cash. Um, and, and that way we can, we can do both that and continue to um, continue to serve the volume of interest that we're getting in the other programs. Um, we are, we're talking about what else does that mean? You know, what's the right timing for us to think about expanding? You know, just a block or two outside of our existing boundaries. Um, and then for new neighborhoods, we really want to have uh, city planning staff work through a planning process for those first. So new neighborhoods is likely a few years away.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
All right, other questions? Well, A- Amber, I know there was a lot of planning that went into this and a lot of these areas for years, folks had tried to figure out how to deal with these. Uh, to encourage investment and to see the interest, demand and success with this already is just amazing.
Thanks Mel, I really appreciate that. It's uh, it's exciting to have the opportunity to be a part of it. Um, so thanks for your time, everybody, and um, all that you do for the city of Des Moines.
Yeah, great. Yeah, and it sounds like you might need to bring some um, lot with exceptions or variances to the Board of Adjustment down in Columbus Park.
Could be, could be, yes.
All right, well, hey, thanks for sticking with us and um, and, and, and sharing your program and good work. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Bert, do we have any other business?
Well, everything for today, I believe.
Okay, all right. Well, everybody, thanks for all your time, attention and dedication and this uh, hearing is formally adjourned. Have a good evening.
Thank you, everybody. Thanks Amber.
Bye guys.
Thanks for your service.
Yeah.